All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's been awhile since we've seen each other, and you've probably heard this many times, but Happy New Year, great to see you all. Looking forward to our celebrations tonight, and we'll get started right now with our Pledge of Allegiance, and it's going to be, let me see. Oh, there you go. Make sure you hit the gavel there, thank you very much. It will be led by Ms., oh boy, that's a tough name right here. You want to do that one, Dr. Rodriguez? Do you know that name for me?
No, he doesn't.
Ms. Lori Van Koonigan's first grade class at Muscoy Elementary. Let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart, ready begins. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under law, individual and liberty, and justice for all. Muscoy Elementary is respectful, responsible, and safe. You may receive it.
I don't know about you, but that's definitely a way to start a meeting right there, so. All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and move on to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
I moved second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any items to poll or discuss? Hearing none? All right, let's go ahead and vote. We'll move on to 1.4, inspirational message, and I'm very fortunate that it is my month this month. In honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, I wanted to take up a suggestion made by one of my board colleagues, Ms. Mary Ann Aviles Grande, and draw my inspirational message from his "I Have a Dream" speech, first delivered on August 28th, 1963, on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial. The words in this speech are just as relevant today as they were nearly 60 years ago, and the sentiment still reverberates around the world. In his honor, and in the hopes that his words will one day be realized, let us pause for a moment and give our attention to this powerful video. Thank you. I don't know about you, but that was pretty powerful for me, and as I get older, thank you. And thank you, Mary Ann, wonderful video that you have shared with us, and with this only your second meeting and having such a profound impact, I really appreciate that. And, you know, many of us were fortunate to go to a number of celebrations this weekend to honor the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and one of those celebrations, you know, the word unity came up quite a few times, and I was very fortunate to be in unity with my board colleagues, our executive cabinet, our city council members, our mayor, and many folks from our community. And it's going to take that kind of unity to move this city forward on many different levels. Obviously, for us, for our school board, for our school district, our children, our community, but we've come to a realization that we can't do it alone. We've been talking about this a long time, working with our local city government, working with our county government, working with our state government, all those folks were there this weekend in unity. And so I believe that we are on a turning point for this city. I truly believe that, and I know it's going to happen. Those of you that believe in faith, God willing, it will happen. So, great video today, and I just wanted to start off our meeting with that, so thank you again. And we have a recognition that is long, long overdue, way overdue, decades overdue. Ms. Ginger, are you going to be reading that, or I'm going to be reading that? I see you coming up. Okay, all right, well, thank you so much, and we're going to do what's called a land acknowledgement. And I'm really, really proud of our folks that have written this for us. I take no credit for it. Mr. Robert Levi, who is from our Elder in Residence at Cal State San Bernardino, and our very own Cindera Weber, who is here this evening. We recognize that Samuel City Unified School District sits on the unceded California Indian homeland of Gablieno, Chimwavi, Kawia, and Surrano tribes. We recognize that every member of the Samuel City Unified School District community has benefited and continues to benefit from the use and occupation of this land since time immemorial. Consistent with our values of community and diversity, we are responsible for acknowledging and making this district's relationship with the American California tribes visible. By offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm American California Indian sovereignty, and we will work to hold Samuel Unified School District more accountable to the needs of American Californian Indians. This land acknowledgement has been written by Californian Indians with the oversight and approval of tribal elders from their local respective tribes. Thank you again to those that wrote that, and for the acknowledgement of this sacred land that we have our city and community upon. All right, to continue, we will move on with 2.0, special presentations and recognitions, 2.1, CIF student athlete recognition. Boy, do we have a lot of them. You know, we have a lot of greatness in this city, and you're about to find out just how great we are by how many students we're going to recognize this evening.
Well, good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, who I know will join us when he can, Board of Education, my fellow cabinet members, and guests who have joined us this evening. Thank you for being here, and thank you, Dr. Wyatt, for sharing such a powerful and meaningful inspirational message with us today. The Board of Education often allocates time during our board meetings to recognize students and honor scholars' achievements in the areas of academics, fine arts, citizenship, most improvement, and athletics. Tonight, we're celebrating students who earned recognition for their performance in academics and athletics this past fall. We have nearly 300 scholars district-wide whose names will be displayed during closed session to acknowledge for everyone the achievements they have earned at the county, regional, state, and national level. Some played on teams that won conference titles, others earned industry certifications in pathways, and still others were recognized at the regional level for a higher level for their participation in academic competitions. We have many, many, very talented students, and we're excited to celebrate them. As a representative of all students who are being celebrated, right now, we're going to honor two special athletes whose performance took them to state-level competitions. Before I introduce them, I'd like to invite the members of the Board of Education to come down in front so that we can honor them, and you can be part of receiving them and greeting them in front of the dais. So please make your way down now. I'd also like to join the board, Principal Jorge Delatorre from San Gregonio High School, as well as any other administrators from San G, the Athletic Director Matt Maida, and coaches Mark Figueroa and Debbie Klink. If you would please join the board up front. Now, while the board cabinet and our San G leadership are getting into position, I'll ask our honorees that when your names are called, that you would come down to the front over on that side by the balloons, so that you can greet people in the receiving line, because each one of them are very proud of your accomplishments and of the accomplishments of all of your students across the district that you're representing tonight. So now, we will be honoring two players and their coaches with the 2022-23 San Gregonio High School Girls Varsity Tennis Team for a great season this year. The two players that we are honoring tonight were the number five doubles seed going into the Sunkist League Doubles Tournament, where they first knocked off the fourth seed in the quarterfinals, and then they knocked out the eighth seed in the semis, and then beat the second-ranked team in the finals to win it all. Our Spartan Ladies were then named the 2022-23 Sunkist All-League Girls Tennis Doubles Champions, which allowed them to advance to CIF Doubles Playoff, where they were victorious in the first round. But what makes this feat especially notable is that these two ladies are playing, just started playing tennis in August of this year. Together, they outperformed athletes who had been playing the sport for many years. I think you'll agree, they certainly had a great year. So let's put our hands together to welcome 12th graders Marissa Aranda and Ashley Medina, along with their parents, to join us up here in front and to receive recognition for yourselves, as well as for the hundreds of athletes and scholars from across the district who achieved success this fall. As they're coming forward, I'll tell you a little bit about them. So Marissa is a model multi-sport student who has a 4.59 grade point average. 4.59, uh-huh. In addition to tennis, she's a member of the San Gregonio Soccer and Softball Teams. She enjoys spending her time painting and plans to study business and become a business owner in the future. Ashley is yet another model multi-sport athlete in the San Gregonio Tennis Team, who also plays soccer and participated on the track team. She has a 4.375 GPA, and outside of school, she enjoys playing club soccer, listening to music, and spending time with her dog. She plans to attend Cal State San Bernardino, and after graduation in her study of nursing, she wants to become a pediatric nurse. So while we're putting the photo together, let's hear a large round of applause for both Marissa and Ashley. We are very proud of you. We are proud of you, and we wish you much success in the future. I want to thank the members of our Board of Education and Cabinet. You can return to your seats now. And as we close this part of our recognition, I want to extend additional congratulations to all of the honorees that will be featured on the screens during closed session. It's our pleasure to recognize your accomplishments. Please watch for them and celebrate them when you see them at schools. This concludes this portion of this evening's presentations, and at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation back over to President Wyatt.
Thank you, Ms. Antiveros, and congratulations again to our outstanding students, scholars, and athletes, their coaches, our staff, and their families. Well done. All right, 2.2, school showcases. We're going to be starting off with, looks like Monterey Elementary School, so welcome Monterey.
Oh, okay, there we go. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Wyatt, Danny Tillman, our Vice President, and all of our school board members, along with my, well, Dr. Rodriguez, who is our administrator in charge, and Anna Applegate, who's my primary evaluator, and my support. We are here tonight to talk to you and showcase our math program and the work that we have been doing around math, the things that we have been doing to build our skills and knowledge, and to, of course, support all of our students at Monterey. So I'm going to turn it over to my math chair, Marilyn Mirad, and she will do the presentation. Thank you.
I would like to thank you, the members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, Mrs. Applegate, and the cabinet for giving us this opportunity to showcase and highlight the exciting things we're doing at Monterey. So I'm going to use the clicker. Here we go. But first, I want to introduce our amazing math committee. I am Marilyn Mirad, by the way. I'm a kindergarten demonstration teacher, and I'm the math lead at Monterey. So, I'd like Leanne, I don't know if Leanne is here, Leanne Rolasmora is our sixth-grade teacher on our math committee. Lori Garcia, would you please stand? She's our first-grade teacher. Marcy Gibson's a special ed teacher, she's right there, and Melanie Anez, she's our 2-3 combo teacher, okay? And of course, Diane Silva, our principal, she's on our committee too, and she goes to all of our meetings. So I want to tell you a little bit about what we've done in the past. In 2017, we did an in-depth study of the eight standards of mathematical practices, and we learned instructional strategies and activities that we could share with our students and our staff. We supported our students to be critical thinkers and problem solvers, and teachers became facilitators. So here's an example of some of the SMPs that our students are doing. SMP four is model with mathematics. SMP five is using appropriate tools strategically. As a result, in 2018-2019, state math scores increased 18.8 points in math, and we were really excited about that. So in 2019, a group of teachers from Monterey and our principal went to a visible learning conference, and we heard John Hattie speak, and we were all very inspired by him. So, we did another book study here, and we did a for math, the Teacher Clarity Playbook, in which our teachers learned to break down the common core standards into concepts and skills, writing learning progressions, learning intentions, and success criteria. And here's an example of some learning intentions that teachers post in their classrooms and refer to it as they teach. Here's another example of that. And some of our teachers put their learning intentions and success criteria right next to their SMPs that they are teaching that day, and some teachers use slides, and they all refer back to those learning intentions and success criteria while they're teaching. Okay? So in 2020 to 2021, we continued working on the Teacher Clarity Playbook, but we also emphasized and focused a lot on number talks, and we were introduced to the dialogic model, and we reviewed the Avid three-column notes to help us with our math, and also claims, evidence, and reasoning, the CER. So here's some pictures of some of the Avid notes that children take, and also CER. You see the kids working on big charts, working collaboratively with that. So in analyzing the data, we saw the need, we saw the need to focus, to now look, look what we've learned in math, all the studies that we did, and now put it to ELA. So we focused on vocabulary, phonemic awareness, phonics skills, and writing, learning intentions and success criteria in those areas. So now, we are in 22-23 school year, and we started another book study, which we like to do. We like to learn, and we're doing Teach Like a Champion 3.1, and some of the techniques that we have gone over are threshold and strong start, which is really welcoming our students into our classrooms in a very positive way, the do now, and the positive framing. So so far, the math committee has done three presentations, and in August, we started with giving our teachers the opportunity to explore the math curriculum guides. And then looking at the data, based on the data, the teachers were given a survey of what they wanted to focus on this year in math. So the following presentations is a result of that survey. So in September, we did a review of the standards of mathematical practices, because it'd been awhile. We started back in 2017, and we did two years' worth of work on that, but then we had virtual learning, and hey, they were such good strategies, we got to go back to that. So we did. And in November, looking at the data again, we had, we know that our students needed more counting and more multiplication fluency, so we worked on that. So our upcoming presentations here in January, at the end of January, we are working, we're going to have a presentation on fractions, instructional strategies, and so we're developing that right now. In March, we're going to work on math vocabulary using ELD portfolios and the Teacher Clarity Playbook, and we're going to be working with our ELD committee, and Violetta Hernandez is sitting right here, she's our lead for that committee, so we're going to be working with that committee too. So we have a big culminating event that happens, and it's called STEAM. And it is April 14th, from 4:00 to 6:30, and you are all invited to come. And we hope you do, because it's an exciting event that we have. We have a lot of guests that come, and let me just show you some pictures here, what STEAM looks like. Well, first of all, you think, did I spell STEAM wrong? Well, I didn't, really, because we wanted to really emphasize music and math. We at Monterey encourage the students to play music, and so we want, that's why the two M's there. So, science, technology, engineering, art, music, and math, and we decorate our school. It looks very festive and very inviting. The parents love it, and so do the students. So where do we start? The kids start doing projects. They, here, we have a kindergarten class doing engineering. They're building towers, and they're decorating them with doors and windows, and they have to count all of them and then measure them. And so they get displayed, they get displayed in our MU room, and plus all the science projects that are done. And of course, we do, there's always a mural. So the kids paint, and there's lots of math activities, and you can see there, there's just a lot of people and a lot of participants. If you want to learn about rocks, you can come to Monterey. If you want to build something out of Legos, you can come to Monterey. And even in our ELA classes, there's skits, different things that are going on there. We have a lot of indoor and outdoor activities, usually rockets that go up in the air, and just a lot of fun activities. And by the way, teachers have to write a proposal for this, and they're all based on the standards, on our state standards, so, and they are okayed by our principal. And we, our teachers are, all our teachers participate, it's really a fun day, and of course, we have to have music, and our children, either our choir or orchestra play, and we often have people within the district come and play. We had a wonderful teacher who came and played the violin for us. And we have special guests that come. Garner Hold Education Through Imagination, they came to our last STEAM event, and they brought really interesting tech kits that the kids could code and make things work, and they brought other interesting activities for them to build things. And we have Curtis Middle School that comes, and we thought, the STEAM committee thought it was really important to invite Curtis and Indian Springs High School, because we want to, we want to, we want our parents and our students to see what Curtis is doing and what Indian Springs are doing, and they get to talk with them, and so they bring all the interesting things that they make there at Curtis, and they're very excited about coming. They've, Chris, Chris is a demonstration teacher, he's the teacher that's sitting down, and he's so excited, they've got so much stuff to bring to our STEAM night. And here's Indian Springs. Indian Springs has come to five out of our six events, and Curtis has come four out of six. They couldn't come the last time we had it, because they were doing something very special for the district. Anyhow, so Indian Springs, they bring all their health and medical technology, manufacturing product development, the kids love getting their hearts checked, and the different things that they do. And we have program specialists that come and help us, and it's pretty awesome that they come and they support us. And we had, oh, last time, we had probably about 10, and it was really, we were grateful for that. Our special guest this year is Amazon. Amazon has been very generous, very generous to Monterey. They've given us backpacks for the kids, school supplies, they've given us books, and shoes, and socks, and sweatshirts, and this holiday season, right before we went off, they invited, they invited us to come and sing. So my class, which I teach kindergarten, we went and sang about seven songs to Amazon in their, you know, around their break room, and they were, it was really great. They gave us a tour, and it was a wonderful thing, and they're, we're excited to see what Amazon brings us, what they're going to do for STEAM. So then that leads us to our wonderful, dedicated Monterey staff. And there's a picture of a lot of our teachers and staff, and they're holding the PBIS 2021 Bronze Award, and we actually have a silver award that was awarded to us in this year, well, '22, '22, and they're proudly hanging up on one of our buildings. And I can't say enough about this Monterey family. It is truly, we care about each other, we care about our students, and Ms. Silva always says, once an eagle, always an eagle, and we've had, you know, teachers that have gone in different directions in our district, and there are always eagles for us. But anyhow, I'd like to thank you very much for letting us showcase Monterey, and we love our school, and we love our teachers, and I hope you come to STEAM. I really do. And so you'll see all the excitement. By the way, there's usually 350 to 400 people there at our school when we do that. So anyhow, thank you so much for this opportunity.
All righty, well, thank you for that wonderful presentation, and just so we know up here on the board and the community as well, on April 14th, correct? And what time?
From 4:00 to 6:30.
4:00 to 6:30, all right. It's a special day for me, it's my daughter's birthday, so she may have to go to STEAM with me on that day. All right, we do have, oh, wait, before you go, when we have the green light, that's usually a good thing, could be a bad thing, in this case, we know it's a good thing. So we have some questions for you and your team.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the hard work that you're doing, especially incorporating music, which I feel the arts and the music, I know myself, going through my earlier years in elementary school, for me, the arts was a huge piece, and that's withdrawing and painting and expressing myself through that medium, and I am so grateful that you're including music, because that is another important aspect within STEAM, which is that additional M, and maybe our district can look at also incorporating that district-wide, so I appreciate you doing the work that you're doing. I do have a question with regards to, you know, adding outside organizations similar to like what Amazon, I know they've contributed a lot. Are they, how are they involved with the site? And I'm looking into, are they creating curriculum, or is this something, so how are they involved with the school site?
No, no, they are not creating curriculum, but they do come and they support us with our students. We have a lot of needy students at Monterey, and they have just come out and asked, you know, just pretty much, what do you need?
Okay.
And so they have donated teacher supplies, like Ms. Mirad mentioned, but also, they've given teachers that school supplies and jacket, sock, those kinds of things that kids need to be able to come to school, because we have a lot of kids who don't have shoes. So we're always on the lookout for kids that, scholars that need shoes, and everybody.
All right, perfect, thank you. I think I misunderstood, then, I appreciate you for clarifying that. Thank you so much for everything, and continue the great work.
Thank you.
All righty. All righty, thank you. And next, I believe it's Ms. Mary Ellen, right?
I'm very excited to get to go and see all of that going on. It's just, it's just amazing to me, all the effort and you put in, and how happy apparently all of your staff looks. They're just great. I worked at Anderson School, which, you know, is a very small school, so I can, I can understand how tight. And also, I want to ask, it's okay, I wear my steampunk outfit, you know? I, I love wearing different hats, you know? So you'll, you'll find me, you'll see me when I come.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Ms. Sevales. Oh, it wasn't Ms. Sevales, okay. Ms. Chuhuski. My lights are wrong up here, so forgive me.
Yeah, the other C. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. It was excellent. I'm really excited to see all of the hands-on mathematics work, because as someone who learned best that way, it took me, when I was at Parkside, they didn't let me count on my fingers, and it took me a long time to learn how to add. So I'm really excited to see the various ways that you're helping our students master their, their mathematics skills. Also, I am a huge Fisher and Frey fan. That is not a book that I know, the Teacher Clarity Playbook, so I do want to look at that. So thank you for bringing that to my, our attention, because I just, I love, Better Than Carrots or Sticks is like my favorite classroom management book ever written. I've already put it on my calendar, so I am planning to be there. It's on here, so it's happening. I would just come with one question, because one of the things I am really a big proponent of is strength-based, anything that's strength-based. And you talked about the positive reframing. And so my question was really about, how are you using positive reframing? How is it described in Teach Like a Champion? Like, what is that? What, I would just want to know that what I'm thinking is how you're doing it is, and you know, how I've taught it is, you know, what you're doing. So I was just kind of curious about that piece.
Well, Teach Like a Champion is really, it provides teachers with UDL strategies, which is another area that we are working on, trying to meet the needs of all kids, giving students that need another way of learning. But also, it's something that helps all students. And so that book in particular has, it is great for teachers to use as a reference. But Ms. Murad, and she can explain a little better than me, but she has, along with the committee, has selected some areas that we, as a, as a, as a school, have decided that we would like to work on. And there are strategies that are fun, but very hands-on in some cases, but just different ways that we can teach our students, because not all students learn the same. And so we want to make sure we meet the needs of all of our scholars.
If I may follow up, so are they talking about positive reframing? Like, like, one of the ways we talk about it is as you're, as you're talking about students, to talk about, you know, they're not bossy, they're a great leader. They're, you know, they're, they're not, you know, you know, they don't talk too much, they're just social, they have great social skills, right? So is that how you're using positive reframing and working with your teachers on how they're describing kids? I'm not sure how the, that's why I just was, that's what, like, really, I was like, ooh. So I'm just kind of trying to understand how that's being used, if I may.
Well, there were several strategies in, in that chapter that we read. And one of the things is assuming the best. Okay? So part of it is that, like, if a student didn't do something right away, it could be because, right now, he's thinking about all the stuff that's, that you just taught, and he forgot to put his chair, he forgot to push his chair when he got him, because he's got so much in his brain right now. So just assuming the best that he just forgot and saying, almost everybody pushed their chair in. And so that'll kind of wake them, oh, I didn't push mine in, right? And it's just stating things a little bit more positively, and trying to get the kids to do what you would like them to do in a very positive way, not in a, you know, not in a blaming way, or, hey, you know, John, you needed to do this, you know? Everybody, I want to see everybody's picking up their pencil right now, you know? And so maybe Johnny did not pick up his pencil, and so this way, it doesn't really single Johnny out, okay? But everybody, okay, you know, that sort of thing.
That's perfect.
But it's, it's really good. That's a book you ought to read, too.
Yeah. I'm going to look at that one. That's exciting.
There's a, there's another chapter, Precise Praise, which is really good, where you're really praising the student for the, what they did that was well done. And not just saying, oh, you did a good job, you did a good job. But you did a really, you worked really hard on your writing, you put finger spaces between your words, it makes sense, so you, you praise the, the stuff that they did well. Then you can say, you know what, you could do this, you know? You forgot to put your period, you could put your period at the end. I'm a kindergarten teacher, so, here you go, spaces and periods, right?
Been there, caught that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. That's fabulous.
And the Do Now is a really good one, because it follows right after your, the threshold, okay? Where you're standing at the front, in the threshold of the door, welcoming kids in, making eye contact, saying, hey, you know, I really like what you're wearing today, hey, like your shoes, and hey, you look really happy today, that kind of thing. And then they go in, and there's an assignment already for them. They know what they're supposed to do, and they go right to it, so there's no, there's no time wasted. And it's stuff you've already been teaching, so it's something that they can do, and then the teacher goes over, reviews it, and it's, it's supposed to be a very short time. And then she can also use it as an assessment. Yeah, so then, yeah. Okay? Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Principal Silva and team. Well done. We are moving on next to Rodriguez Prep Academy, and Dr. Randy Clyde, principal and his team, come on up.
Good evening. Board President Wyatt, board members, administrator in charge, Dr. Rodriguez, and cabinet. I'm the very proud principal of Rodriguez Prep Academy, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to showcase some of the great things happening at RPA. Looks like I have the clicker here. Okay, here we go. So RPA's vision states that all students at RPA will achieve high academic progress. And we can see here, that's our, our vision that we worked on as a staff. And we work towards this vision by developing systems that make this vision a reality, and we're going to share some of those systems with you today. These programs that we're going to highlight today that help support this vision are our merit system, our learning centers, and our School of Engineering and Design. So with our merit system, so our merit system is a positive acknowledges system that celebrates students for their excellence in academics, attendance, behavior, and extracurriculars. So if we look here, so we have our merit system, which is divided into two different categories. So students earn merits individually in each of these, in these various categories throughout the school year. The number of merits that they earn advances them in rank and privileges. Students can also earn merits collectively as a house. The four houses, kind of like Harry Potter, are in memory of the Medal of Honor recipient, Colonel Rodriguez, and are established to promote collective excellence and promote school spirit. The merits earned individually and collectively lead to a variety of privileges and incentives, such as lunch line priority, privileged cards, and field trips. And so to highlight some of these, we're going to have a little video clip play here of some of these incentives, incentives and privileges. So you can see, there's a lot of reasons to show excellence at Rodriguez Prep Academy. Our next program that we're going to highlight is our learning centers, which are tier-three academic support structures for reading and math. The purpose of the learning centers is to provide targeted tier-three support in reading and math based on student learning data, such as NWEA and PLC Common Formative Assessment Discussions. Not all students, surprisingly, entering RPA meet grade-level standards and do need additional support to accelerate their learning. The learning center period actually occurs during our period eight, our advisory period, which makes the program accessible to all students needing that support without any major schedule changes. The classes are taught by two high-performing teachers, Ms. Cruz and Ms. Diaz. And the program is structured in a way that can serve up to 125 students in a year. It's highly focused, it's grade-level goals, independent student goals, implements weekly progress monitoring. And we have seen all students who have experienced the learning center show growth, and have even seen approximately a quarter of the students achieve grade-level proficiency once completing the program. And then our third program we want to highlight is our School of Engineering Design, which exposes students to knowledge, skills, and careers in STEAM. And having heard what Monterey does, maybe we'll make a connection later this year. Our unique program is actually, a lot have to do with its schedule. The schedule allows the students an opportunity to take a STEAM elective during eighth period along with other electives simultaneously, like computer science, music, Avid, and next year, foreign language. Our program focuses on a problem-based pedagogical approach. So STEAM at Rodriguez is not just a thing, it's a way of learning. And seen here on the left side, you can see our School of Engineering and Design process, and that process is embedded within our program. We have a lead teacher, Ms. Avery, who serves as a STEAM coach and supports the program and teacher development. Our curriculum falls into three categories, PLTW, or Project Lead the Way, and that offers classes such as robotics, medical detectives, design and modeling, and app creators. We have Accelerator, which provides highly engaging lessons in STEAM. And we also have teacher-created courses, because teachers can be quite creative when given the opportunity to create their own curriculum. And we have some of those courses, such as speech and debate, biological illustration, neurobiology, and sewing eagles, just to name a few. Regardless of the course and/or curriculum, the students are all engaging in the engineering and design process at Rodriguez. Recently, let's see, where is it going? Recently, our speech and debate team and class, which is an eighth-period class in our STEAM program, had a significant accomplishment, as was highlighted in this video clip that we want to share with you today.
Speech and debate team at a school in San Bernardino has been bringing in the awards.
In tonight's all-good news story, Eyewitness News reporter Ashley Mackey shows us how this club is making a difference in students' lives.
Critical thinking, communication, and teamwork are just a few of the skills that students at Rodriguez Prep Academy in San Bernardino are learning from being in the speech and debate class.
They get injured either mentally or physically.
Normally, when you're a 12-year-old, you don't really talk about big issues like tackle football, desalination, the economy, and other things. But debate helps you, allows you to research this and apply it.
What started out as just a club at the school has developed into a full class. They compete against a variety of different schools, and at first, they struggled to win some of the competitions. But today, the program has developed to earn a winning record over the past three years, and those who graduated still reflect on the impact it's had on their lives.
Went from a kid who could like barely avoid stumbling their own words, into someone who could speak like with good projection, and someone could actually put thoughts together and communicate that clearly.
The students, primarily made up of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, research and debate topics ranging from illegal immigration to desalination. Their debate coach says, not only does it help develop skills that they can use later in life, but it also provides a distraction from the challenges they may face outside of the classroom.
Whatever statistics you can dream up and drum up for the community, they're there, all the challenges and all the negatives. And they come here and they block all that out. And they say, what I do here in this classroom, what I do here in the speech and debate is going to prepare me for the next level.
Being able to practice my public speaking, and also being just well-rounded, and being able to know more about the world and the world around me at such a young age, to me, that was just a fascinating idea.
Staff and students are proud of the work the speech and debate team has put in so far, and are excited to see the program continue to grow. Ashley Mackey, ABC 7 Eyewitness News.
Some unique face paint there. It was Halloween when they visited, so they took off the costumes, but you couldn't take off the face paint. The next video clip is going to highlight some of the fun learning experience that our students had in the STEAM program, separate from speech and debate. So that was just a small snapshot of some of the great programs we have at Rodriguez Prep Academy. And I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to showcase that to you today, and to thank some of my staff for coming after work today to support. Thank you.
All righty, Dr. Clyde, looks like we have a light on, so hold on.
I just, yes.
That's a good thing. Ms. Resales Medina.
I'm just really excited that we have great presentations coming forward to the board, because then those that watch us online are able to see the many great things we're doing at our school sites, middle school as well, high school, we're going to have the next presentation from San Bernardino High School, our middle, our elementary schools. And just showcasing the many great things that you're doing, it's amazing. So I just wanted to say congratulations to you and the whole staff at the site, as well as students, families, parents, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Resales Medina. Anyone else? All righty, thank you again. All right, moving forward. Absolutely. Anytime our kids are on the news on TV, that's a good thing. Let me tell you that right now. Let me see here, and I do Paul J's, I'm bouncing around here. All right, our next presentation will be San Bernardino High School, and with our principal, Ms. Anna Sosa. Welcome, San Bernardino High School. And team, and looks like a lot of students, too. All right, even better.
Good evening, esteemed board members, cabinet, and all attendees in person and online. I'm Anna Sosa, the proud principal at San Bernardino High School. We have our, two of our vice principals, Dr. Torres and Dr. Brown. We also have Dr. Slur, who is not here in attendance. We have our link learning program specialist, John Wingo. We have our program lead, staff, and students here to support us. I wanted to take a quick moment, so proud of so many students and their families that also came out to support. Everyone from the Cardinal familia, please stand up really quick. There's so many of us here to support. Thank you so much. And if you're a parent, student, staff member, thank you so much for being here to represent. We're thankful for the opportunity to have our students highlight one valuable aspect that we have at San Bernardino High School, our work-based programs. It is impressive to see the skill set that our students gain from each program that will follow them beyond high school. And they, that can transfer to any variety of careers. We want to thank our program teachers for all they do to expose our students to various opportunities and expertise. There's so much more I can say, however, I wanted to give our students their time to shine. Without further ado, I'm going to pass it along to Anna. Without further ado, I'm going to pass it along to Anne Martinez, who's also our reigning Ms. Cardinal, to kick off our presentation. Thank you.
Alright. Good evening, my name is Anne Martinez, and I represent the E-Business Academy at San Bernardino High School. Anthony Dos Remedios is the lead teacher for this pathway. His passion for business and his students is what makes him a one-of-a-kind teacher. He makes it a responsibility of his to impact his students, whether it be teaching a business lesson or a life lesson. In our program, we learn financial literacy and public speaking. In our program, we get to participate practicing our knowledge in finances through our two student-run enterprises, the Nest Student Store and the Nest Coffee Cart. Along with running our two businesses, we also participate public speaking by presenting in conferences such as the CTE Conference in November of 2022, along with the Educating for Careers in Sacramento this February of 2023. The E-Business Academy has prepared me for my future by allowing me to learn how to manage a business. I'm currently the general manager for the Nest Enterprise, and I've learned what it is, what it's like to run and manage a business. It has also prepared me by allowing me to connect and network with people in that field. After graduating this June, I plan to continue in business by majoring in marketing and business. As of right now, I'm still waiting to hear back from colleges, but my dream is to attend NYU School of Business. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ivan Castaneda, and I am representing the Public Safety Pathway. The teacher of our program is Mr. Battle. He is a good lead teacher for the students because he helps you become more independent and self-sufficient, but also puts you into real situations with a group to expand on your teamwork and communication skills. In our program, we learn the application and extent of laws, public service careers, teamwork, Bill of Rights and its use in today's laws, common penal code and vehicle codes, emergency procedures, ethnics, criminal investigation, as well as forensics. In our program, we get to participate in experiences like field trips where students interact with industry professionals, demonstrate and demonstrations of public service equipment, public safety, students assist in planning SBHS fire, earthquake drills, and conduct mock emergency triage, as well as in-class, or class, hands-on activities relating to real-life situations and public service occupations. The program, the Public Safety Program, has prepared me for my future by improving my teamwork skills and by showing me career opportunities that I knew I didn't know that I was interested in until I was shown what those careers do and how it helps society and how I can make a difference. And after I graduate, I will proceed to get my law degree and become a lawyer. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tommy Moreno, and I am the representative of the Engineering Pathway. The teacher for our pathway is George Nunez. Mr. Nunez is a good teacher because his students love him and inconsistently and persistently strives to ensure that the students are getting a grasp of the material and that they are able to effectively apply it. In our pathway, we learn the basics of engineering and go into full detail on it. As you can see, these are some of the projects that we've worked on before, and these are what the students are learning and they're applying. As you can see, we have the elevator, the traffic, the soccer goal, the autonomous vehicle. Along with that, these students also use what they learn and apply it to any personal projects that they may have. One example of this would be a guitar pedal that one of the students have made. It distorts the noise, and yours is before distortion. And after distortion. After graduating this June, I plan to attend Cal Pauline Pomona, where I pursue a degree in mechanical engineering. And my end goal is to become a Maginot and work for Disney. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jenna Parfina, and I represent the CTE Art Pathway. The teacher for our program is Ms. Bun. Ms. Bun is a great lead teacher for the students because she inspires the students to try new things. That feels hard at first, but her inspiration gives us the confidence to try it out. Ms. Bun really cares about us as people and is there for us at all hours of day and night. To add a personal note here, I just want to say thank you to her because she helped me in ways that I did not know I needed helping and helped me grow both as a person and as an artist. In our program, we learn the fundamentals of art and the various mediums of art such as digital art, watercolors, inks, markers, and painting. We also learn how to take still images and bring them to life. We get to learn the history and processes of animation and get to learn how to storyboard and create concept art and learn some art history. In our program, we get to participate in experiences like trips to community colleges, art competitions, art shows, projects in class, and field trips to industry leaders in arts like Disney. The CTE Art Pathway has prepared me for my future by developing my art skills, learning to communicate and work with others, and learning to create complex ideas or forms of art using fundamentals of art, color theory, and other basics we can build upon. After graduating this June, I plan to attend a private university, my first choice being USC, and major in animation, hopefully getting to create shows that can inspire, teach, or entertain like the generation before me.
Good evening, my name is Tiffany Sanchez, and I represent the Vocal Arts Conservatory Pathway. Rhonda Bauer is our program's instructor. Being able to recognize a person's potential instantly makes Ms. Bauer a good, effective lead teacher for the class. Students are pushed to the limits by Ms. Bauer, who also really brings out their talent. She works with students in the classroom, assisting them in learning how to sing or comprehend music. We get the opportunity to sing in various-sized groups or even solos while learning how to read and write different kinds of music as part of our curriculum. Students receive instruction in lead singing and digital music creation and more. As part of our curriculum, we get to take part in activities like traveling to sing at various locations throughout Southern California. The Vocal Arts Conservatory Pathway has helped me start from absolutely nothing to preparing me for the years ahead. Choir has taught me to set my power and my voice and to have a strong passion with it that I'm not hesitant to express. I immediately realized while learning to follow my interests that I have a very great passion for music and vocal arts, and the CTE program has helped me develop and learn more.
Thank you.
Good evening to you all. My name is Andrew Leva. I am the current drum major for our marching band, and I'm happy to represent the Commercial and Instrumental Music Pathway. The teacher for our pathway is Dana Camfield. Ms. Camfield is a good lead teacher for the students because she helps us feel attached and get motivated with the things we do. She's always there to help us with anything we need and make sure we always understand. In our program, we learn leadership, music theory, introduction to digital musicianship, and many more. In our program, we get to participate in events like parades, performing at Knott's, district performances, Disneyland, and even school performances like rallies. The Commercial and Instrument Music Pathway has prepared me for my future by connecting me with people who could help me, guiding me to hone my skills and talents, teaching me how to lead and supporting me, ensuring that anything is possible with support and programs that I can use to even further my career in music. It's helped me with basic life skills as well, such as time management, working as a group, and even interviewing skills. After graduating this, in June, I plan to attend RCC and join their marching band as well as major in music. Thank you all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roberto Estrada, and I represent the Health Career Collaborative Program at San Bernardino High School. What the program does is it offers us an insight on medical fields and professions. The teacher for our program is Ms. Wagner, who was a registered nurse and is now currently a physiology teacher. The way this program has impacted me is it shows me that no matter what you like, there's always going to be something in medicine for anybody. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daisy Santiago, and I represent the Cardinal City Bake Shop Program. The teacher for our program is Ms. Kimmin Briani. Ms. Kim is an outstanding leader for the students because she's been running this program for 19 years and has her own experience owning and operating her own business, bake shop, and wedding cake business. In this program, we pursue this career pathway and have hands-on experiences that emphasize industry awareness, sanitation, food, safe food handling, food and beverage production, nutrition, food service management, event planning, and customer service. In our program, we get to participate in experiences like community events, school events, special order catering, and community service. We work together to plan and run our school rallies, dances, and learn to execute off-campus contracts for prom, grad night, while providing professional catering service. The Cardinal City Bake Shop has prepared me for employment in the food service industry by preparing me for the state food handler test, which I passed, proper customer service, and how to demonstrate creativity and work properly. After graduating this June, I plan on attending Valley College for culinary arts to someday open my own bakery too. And in front of you, as you noticed, you have gourmet chocolate chip cookie and our oatmeal crunch. I hope you enjoy them. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Hugo Sora. I am here and I'm representing the Silk Screening, Embroidery, Marketing, and Enterprise Pathway. The teacher of our program is Jeff, Mr. Jeffrey Briani. He's a good teacher advisor for the students because he works with the students and builds connections which makes it fun and easier to understand what he's trying to teach us. This motivated me every day to wake up every day and go to his class. In our program, we learn the basics of starting a t-shirt company and how to run it. We are taught how to make designs and move those designs onto screens to later make them into shirts and put them on clothing, banners, and many more. We are taught individual steps-by-steps techniques to create professional-looking garments. In our second semester, we are taught how to embroider using a single-head and a 12-head industrial company embroidery machine. In our program, we participate in experiences like working with the manual and automatic screen printing machines, heat presses, poster makers. We take the field trips to learn more about silk screening and clothing industry. And the Silk Screening Pathway has prepared me for the future by teaching me proper work ethic, teamwork, communication, patience, leadership, responsibility. But it wasn't just the pathway that prepared me for my future, but the man who taught me the pathway, Mr. Briani. He has helped shape me into the professional that is ready to go into employment in the clothing brand industry. I am graduating in June. I plan to attend Cal State Long Beach, Cal State University of Long Beach, and major in business and marketing to later start my own clothing brand. When I start my clothing brand, I plan to intend everything I learned in this pathway to hopefully have a successful clothing brand.
Hello, it's me again. I am representing the Theater Program at our school. The teacher for our program is Olivia Parker. Ms. Parker is a good lead teacher because of the students. She ensures that all of them are always productive and doing their best. She gives all the students equal opportunities, no matter the skill level that they're at. She believes that each and every student has the potential to succeed and become a vital member of the production crew. In our program, we learn the technical aspects of theaters, including lights, sound, the business in theater, as well as the acting. The students get hands-on experience with using equipment in the theater like soundboards, lightboards, wirings, microphones, and many more. At this point in time, theater is just a program, but I believe that it has the potential to be stretched out into a pathway. This program allows students to have excellent skills that they can use in and outside the workplace, as well as career development. The Theater Program provides students with insight into the industry and helps students who are seriously considering a career in the entertainment industry, whether it be acting or technical work. The Theater Program has prepared me for my future by allowing me to break out of my shell, giving me experience with basic interview skills, leadership skills, work pacing, and public speaking. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen again. My name is Roberto Estrada, and I'm proud to represent the Junior ROTC Program at San Bernardino High School. I'm the co-commander, and this is my baby, I guess. So our program is... The teacher for our program is Sergeant Abangan, who is a wonderful teacher and very knowledgeable. What we do in our program is we learn about leadership and hands-on skills and careers inside the military and outside the military. The reason why Sergeant Abangan is such a good teacher for our program is because he helps us get involved both in school and in our community. The ways we get involved in our community is we participate in parades. We do services like we present the colors for... We present the flags for both state and national for after-school and in-school events. We learn about aerospace science, and we learn about leadership. After I graduate in June, I plan to attend Loyola Marymount University and major in film and television production while participating in ROTC because my main goal is to become an officer in the Air Force. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Nicholas Elliott, and I am with the Basics Program. My teacher is Mrs. Holmes. She is a good teacher because she wishes the best for us. She also challenges us, but she also helps us when we need it. We learn academics and other life skills, working at home, working at work. The Basics Program has prepared me for my future by teaching me how to get a job and working in a... Working, as well as other... Pro... I forgot. We also do other, we do other skills by learning how to get, learning how to get up in the morning. We, we... And workability. I get to have a job and get paid. I work at Nutrition Services Office, and I take the city bus with my classmates. We prepare ready-to-cook food, and I also have my food handled as cards. After I graduate, I would work in a warehouse and take school to get my driver's license. Thank you.
Well done, everybody. My name's John Wingo. I'm the Link Learning Program Specialist at San Bernardino High School. I'm really proud of these guys. We saw this as a work-based learning opportunity to give kids a chance to stand up and present to an elected board in their city. The future directions of our program, I wanted to point out to you that we are working more and more each month with launch and trying to get apprenticeships for our students through both local labor unions, particularly the carpenters and the Teamsters Union that you see listed second. We're really developing a good bond with Teamsters Local 1932, which has an office and a training center downtown. We're building, and hopefully will be open in April, a technology, engineering, and art lab for all of our students to get more hands-on experiences. That's in collaboration with Garner Holt. We're increasing our articulations and early college opportunities. We're also, as I've said, hands-on experiences. We're really looking to give students experiences so that they can hang their core academics on. And we're deepening our culture of preparing for life after high school and making that genuine and real. So thank you very much. I want to introduce next Ms. Jenna Parfina to talk about what's going on in our high schools all around the district.
Hello, my name is Jenna Parfina, and I am the current Cardinal City Mayor. For those who don't know, it is equivalent to being the ASB president. I have been involved in Forest Sports Unified Cardinals Student Leadership Advisory Council, Principal Student Leadership, National Honor Society Vocal Arts Conservatory Student Government, and the Marketing Department, just to name a few. As a student who has experienced school as a club member, athlete, and leader, I am proud to say that the educational system has become more accommodating to students who want to pursue certain pathways or professions in the near future. I will now report to you about a few events that will be taking place at our district high schools. Royal Valley High School, February 3rd, Winter All-School Assembly. February 4th, AVHS Winter Formula 2023 from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. February 6th to February 10th... February 6th to February 10th, Council Appreciation Week. February 17th, National Kindness Day Lunch Activities. Additionally, they will be visiting feeder middle schools throughout January and February, bringing the AVHS experience to all incoming ninth graders, including in the showcase seven college and career academies, ASB and Athletics, Avid, JROTC, Pathway and so much more. On January 27th, they'll go to King Middle School. On January 31st, Curtis. February 2nd, Shannon Hills. February 7th, Chavez. And February 10th, Richardson. For Cojones High School, they will have annual academic award ceremony, winter formal. Both events will be in February, dates to be determined. Indian Springs Winter Formal will be in January 28th, award ceremony, February 9th and 10th. Middle School College, CBVC College classes begin January 17th, all students. ASB Schoolwide Talent Show, January 20th, all students. School Site Council Meeting, January 26th, all are welcome. Welcome with the principal, January 27th, with parents and guardians. Fall First Semester Award Assembly, January 27th, school-wide scholars. Pacific High School. Pacific High School ASB will be putting on a winter formal spear week, January 30th through February 3rd, which will be followed by annual winter formal on Saturday, February 4th. Pirate Volunteers will be supporting the monthly Pureland Food Distribution on Saturday, February 11th, where 500-plus families will be served. Pacific High School College Career Center will be hosting various career days throughout the month of February. San Andreas High School, the UC Art and Entrepreneurship Internship begins January 11th. Gold certification, school visit will be in January. San Andreas will be recruiting for the next Valley College Orientation Dual Enrollment Class. Career Club meets every second Wednesday of the month at 11:45 a.m. Livestream Blood Drive is March 16th at 8 a.m. San Andreas Health Fair is March 17th at 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. San Bernardino High School School Site Council, January 31st, all are welcome. Fall registration for our current students will begin in February. Fall registration for incoming freshmen, February 7th to 9th. Scholarship Mock Interviews, January 23rd to February 3rd. Winter Formal at Area Country Club will be at February 25th. February 26th to 28th, some of our Pathway students will be presenting at the Educating for Careers Conference in Sacramento. For San G High School, January 17th, 20th Care Week. January 20th, Blood Drive. January 26th, Winter Rally. February 4th, Winter Formal Dance. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
You're all welcome to come visit and see it in real time, see how amazing our teachers and students are. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you Cardinal team, let me say that. We have quite a few lights up here, so we don't know who will be asking what and answering what, but if we do a visit, I might have to take a whole week to go visit all these programs, just so you know. So it might be a vacation to go there, but great job to everyone. All right, we'll start with Vice President Tillman. Mr. Tillman?
Much President Wyatt. Can you start the clock for me so I won't go over? I want to keep it at five minutes. This is amazing and I'm proud of you all. I graduated from San Bernardino High School in 1981. And it was because of my math class and my drafting class and my auto shop class that I got a job at the county of San Bernardino. So I started work at the county of San Bernardino when I was in high school. I started the summer before my senior year and then worked there half-days in my senior year. When I first got hired, it was the clerical typing class I had at San Bernardino High School that allowed me to work doing clerical work. I got laid off, then I went to the garage, but it was the training I had at auto shop where I was in there changing tires and doing a lot of work there. And then the drafting class allowed me to work in surveyors. I started work there in 1980 when I, I entered when I was 16, started work when I was 17 and I just retired from the county after 42 years. Ended up being the CIO, so in charge of IT for a huge organization. So my point to you is what you guys are doing right now is huge and is going to benefit you and I hope you realize that. I played in the band, played music, I still play drums in my church. San Bernardino High School has a legacy of musicians. I think of Chrissy Billicky and Clarence Harris, who played professionally, who performed on cruise ships. Anything you think about in the music industry, they did it. So I'm proud of you. What you're learning is going to benefit you greatly. I went to San Bernardino Valley College and transferred to Cal State San Bernardino. I hear a lot of you saying you'll do the same thing. You're on the right path. So keep up the good work. If I can be of any help at all, please call me and if you need a letter of reference, I'm your guy. Let me give you my cellphone number. Okay, 909. 800. And 909. 800. 03. 18. And I'm glad to hear that some of you work in internships in the school district. We want to expand that. We do computer work in the district, clerical work. I mean, I can't even start to talk about all the different professions in the school district. So I hope we're capitalizing on that and make sure we put this talent to use. Thank you and congratulations. I'm proud of all of you.
All righty. Thank you, Vice President Tillman, and you heard him, he's retired, so you could call him and send him lots of messages. Ms. Savios.
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to wait for everybody to go first before I made any comments, so I just want to say, wow, wow, wow. I am so, so impressed and so excited to see everything that, you know, Monterey Elementary, you know, school, Rodriguez Prep and you guys now, every single one of the schools that came up, you know, for Rodriguez Prep, your merit system, you know, the intricate, you know, system that you put together to reward your students, your STEAM projects that you displayed, just amazing. Monterey as well, you know, the way that you dive into the subject, you know, math and expanding to ELA and, you know, teachers wanting to learn more of how to be a better teacher and how to, you know, teach every student. And then you guys, I mean, girl, this is amazing. Thank you. Cheers. Don't be jealous. It is delicious. But no, likewise, you know, like Mr. Tillman said, myself, you know, I went to Valley College as well after high school. I didn't have as many opportunities in high school as you all did, but still, no excuse. So you having all of the opportunities that you have, there's no way, if I'm here, there's no way that you can't achieve and attain and get to wherever it is that you want to be. So, you know, kudos to you all, students, educators alike, and thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you, Ms. Savios. And I already ate my cookie, so I didn't have to do it in front of everybody. I was trying to sneak it in. Ms. Husky?
I was up here sneaking my cookie in because that thing was delicious, so thank you to the bakery group. I also attended San Bernardino High School. I did not graduate from there, but I did attend. My mom was the choir and theater teacher at San Bernardino High School, so I spent a lot of time in that theater. I was in the marching band and I played in some of the productions in the pit. As you guys were talking about that, I was like totally back in time just seeing myself, you know, on the field and in the choir room and in the band room and in the theater. And I'm really excited to see what happens with the theater renovation. My first question is, I missed two names. I was trying to get everybody's name. So you want to go to USC and study animation. Your CTE is visual media. What was your name? I'm so sorry, I didn't catch it.
My name is Jana.
Jana, okay. Ah, okay, so, okay, Jana and Jenna, right? Okay, perfect. And then the other one was from Mr. Mbriani, the silk screening embroidery. I'm sorry?
Hugo Soto.
Hugo Soto, thank you Hugo. I'm really excited about everything that you guys are doing. I'm also a Cal Poly grad, so for those of you who, somebody who wants to go to Cal Poly. Mr. Wingo knows how to reach me, any of you want a letter, but, you know, Cal Poly is my school, so I'm really excited about all of that. You guys have an amazing linked learning program going on. I know, Mr. Wingo, you have put a lot of work into building this, so I want to commend you for that. It's very exciting. I know what, you know, the growth and everything in the program over the past five or six years, so I'm really excited to see where you are. I'm very excited. I hope if you guys are having theater or music programs or anything, please invite us. I'd like to come out to see all of the different programs. And I have one last question before I go, and Mr. Wingo could probably know what it is. When can I come to the coffee company and get coffee? Because that is like, I'm like, when's the coffee, when's the coffee company open? I'm like, because I'll be there, I need my daily dose.
Okay, so as of right now, we are hosting visiting days, so if you do want to contact me for you to have a visit day of the entire program, we can arrange that. But we sell in the mornings from 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock, if you ever just want to stop by in the morning, or after school from 2:35 to 3:30.
Okay, and where do we go?
You guys can...
The size of the office.
Yeah, behind the cafeteria.
Behind the cafeteria, okay. Thank you so much, I'm very excited. Thank you and congratulations to you guys. Congratulations, everybody on your presentations tonight. It's not easy to get up here and talk to us, so you guys did an amazing job. Amazing.
Thank you, Ms. Husky. Ms. Marion Aviles Grande.
Okay, I'm putting in my cookie order. Four dozen, but by the time I order, probably five dozen because I have to share. I can't just eat them all by myself. But that is the best oatmeal cookie I've ever had and I'm an oatmeal cookie aficionado. It's the right size, it melts in your mouth, it just, you one bite and just like all over the place. That's amazing. That is, that's where I want to go visit and I will write anybody a letter also, by the way. Get ahold of me through the office. I'm out there on the internet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just wanted to say congratulations to the whole school, as well as all those that came to present and share their story and share what they would like to do, share the career pathways. You sold it so wonderfully and I'm just wondering how we can create a program, even if it's throughout the school district, where all those that are participating in career pathways, it's like we're creating our own little mini-college within our school sites. I mean, the amount of career pathways we are offering just at San Bernardino alone, San Bernardino High School alone, we could create maybe even a smaller version of a community college type of a graduation that showcases how many students were able to participate in career pathways and even receiving certificates. You know, we want to definitely promote, highlight and encourage other students also to participate. So I just want to say again, thank you everyone. I really do appreciate the staff, the work that you're putting in. The apprenticeship program is an amazing opportunity because once you graduate high school and you participate in the programs with them, you'll have a livable wage. I know for us, at least for me personally, when you look at career pathways, we want to provide opportunities that will be paid well, not just entering a realm of jobs where it's not paying very well and you're going to have difficulty sustaining yourself as you participate in these programs. But apprenticeship is a great way, so I'm glad you brought in Teamsters and the carpenters and so forth to help support us in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, and wow, I have to repeat what Ms. Savios said. And I'm, one, just know we are very, very proud of you. We're very proud of you. Outstanding job. Many of you I've seen at numerous events on your campus and all over the city, I'll tell you, so it's just great to see you here before us. And as many of my colleagues have said, you know, speaking publicly is not the easiest thing to do. It really isn't, but all of you did it very well, so job well done. I want to say thank you to our staff as well. Thank you to our teachers for the amazing job you're doing with our kids and you're developing and molding our future leaders of this city and this community. So, you know, my hat's off to our teachers and our administrators as well for doing an amazing job with our students. And, you know, you're right, it was great to see our elementary, middle school and high school programs together because we see that natural matriculation, right? From elementary to middle school and to high school and amazing, amazing things happening at each level. Wow. You know, first I was impressed by the elementary program presentation. I was like, gosh, that's amazing. Then next thing, you know, middle school comes up and blows me away and then, of course, you guys are the grand finale of the high school presentation. And that's exactly what we hope for and want for every student in our district and our city. And just know, you are the role model for our kids to look up to, right? And so keep doing the amazing job that you're doing. I look forward to seeing you graduate. I look forward to seeing you graduate from college and I look forward to you creating these businesses out there that our city desperately needs, right? If anybody knows anything about, you know, the GDP, America is built on the backbone of small businesses. It really is. So we need you to create these small businesses for our city and for our community and for our country. So for those of you that are entrepreneurs, go for it. Looking forward to seeing that, right? Looking forward to your own product line of clothing. Pretty exciting, so. I could talk a long time, so I'm going to stop because I'm super excited and super proud of you, but great job to everyone tonight, fantastic presentations. Look forward to you at the end of the year. All right, and we are going to continue to move on and we have a number of resolutions here and I don't have them, I believe, numbered, so I'm going to just start from left to right today. And we are going to start with the resolution and recognition African American History Month. Ms. Husky, 2.4, oh wait, 2.3, sorry. So we'll click on 2.3 and you'll go to public content and you'll read that section for us.
Whereas African American History Month, also known as Black History Month, traces back to 1915, when the father of Black History Month, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, now known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, ASALH. And whereas, in 1976, President Gerald Ford issued the first Black History Month proclamation, calling upon Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas, African American History Month recognizes the significant contributions of African Americans throughout our nation's history through their contributions in arts, entertainment, law, politics, sciences, sports and so much more. And therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares the month of February 2023 to be African American History Month and encourages educators, students and families to learn about the heritage and achievements of African Americans through appropriate programs and activities throughout the year.
Vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.4, Resolution and Recognition of our great colleague, Dr. Margaret Hill Day. Ms. Savios.
Whereas Dr. Margaret, Margaret Bunnam, is that? Bynam, thank you. Hill was born on December 17th, 1940 in Virginia. And whereas Dr. Margaret Hill grew to love education, earning a bachelor's degree from Norfolk State University, a master's degree in educational, I apologize, a master's degree in educational administration from Cal State San Bernardino and a doctorate from the University of Rettles. And whereas, Dr. Hill began her educational career as a teacher at San Bernardino High School in 1971 and later became a vice principal and principal, spending the last 16 years before her retirement from SBCUSD as the principal of San Andreas High School. And whereas, after her retirement, Dr. Hill returned to work at the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Office in 2006 as an assistant superintendent until her second retirement in 2012. And whereas, in 2011, Dr. Hill was elected to the Board of Education, where she faithfully served the district for 10 years. And whereas, throughout her adult life, Dr. Hill served in a number of nonprofit community-based clubs and organizations and was recognized with many honors and awards. And whereas, the San Bernardino City Unified School District honored Dr. Hill in 2019 by naming the remodeled boardroom, the Dr. Margaret Hill Community Room. And whereas, on December 19th, 2021, Dr. Margaret Hill passed away. And whereas, the City of San Bernardino declared January 22nd to be the annually known as, to be annually known as Dr. Margaret Hill Day. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of... the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes January 22, 2023, Dr. Margaret Hill Day, a day to celebrate her life and legacy. So moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? I will say, for those of you that are not aware, I'm making an early announcement. This Saturday is the first inaugural, It's All About the Children, Dr. Margaret Hill Day at Young Visionary Youth Leadership Academy from 11:00 to 3:00, if you can make it. All right, that was my discussion, so let's vote. All right, motion carries. Two point five, resolution and recognition of Ronald Reagan Day. Mr. Vice President Tillman.
Whereas Ronald Wilson Reagan was born on February 6th, 1911, and served as California's 33rd governor from 1967 to 1975. And whereas Reagan was known for his small-town values of hard work, tolerance, and the importance of education. And whereas Ronald Reagan was sworn in as the nation's 40th president on January 20th, 1981, and continued to serve until 1989, a period when our nation experienced unprecedented economic growth and prosperity. And whereas the state of California has declared February 6th to be Ronald Reagan Day, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District encourages all district schools to undertake educational activities on February 6th, 2023 to honor the life and accomplishments of Ronald Reagan.
All moved.
Second. All right, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to two point six, resolution and recognition of National School Counseling Week, Ms. Aviles Grande.
Whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors help families focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas, school counselors are instrumental in helping students, teachers, and families deal with personal trauma, as well as tragedies in their communities and the United States. And whereas, school counselors help students cope with the drastic shift in their living and learning environments by responding to students' new and ongoing needs through academic planning, developing social-emotional learning competencies, coping strategies, and new ways to socialize, and even through lifesaving interventions in some cases. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins California and the nation in recognizing February the 6th through the 10th, 2023, as National School Counseling Week, and encourages all schools to promote awareness of the role school counselors play in preparing students for fulfilling lives as contributing members of society.
Moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We're going to move on to two point seven, Royal Valley High School Fentanyl Awareness Video. And at this time, I wanted to welcome and introduce Colleen Williams, our Director of Student Wellness and Support Services. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board members, Cabinet members, and our guests here tonight. It brings us great pleasure to bring to you tonight a district team's opioid action plan for our district, so that we can be able to respond to this developing need across our nation. In particular, as a district, we are educating, supporting, and providing emergency response training if and when a fentanyl overdose occurs. Thank you, David. As a district, we wanted to ensure that we're ready to do our part in supporting an opioid concern within our community. While Narcan or Naloxin can support any opioid overdose, we want to ensure we are prepared for a fentanyl overdose, which is becoming much more prevalent. Just to note, fentanyl is a synthetic opioid, which is causing extreme physical responses and may result in death. You can see the rising concerns across our nation and even within our own state. As a district, before we jump into the Narcan administration training process, let's take a minute to understand the district's full opioid action plan. In terms of prevention and awareness, our students in high school, middle school, and some older elementary students were provided with a fentanyl awareness lesson to outline the dangers of fentanyl, the possible harms that can be caused, and where fentanyl can be found. Additionally, we held a community town hall with experts in the field. You can still have access to that presentation by downloading the document on our website. And then lastly, community resources were collected and provided on the Wellness Resource website developed by the Student Wellness and Support Services. These resources include how to talk to your children about drugs, all the way through to treatment services that are available within our community. In terms of intervention and cessation programs, the Student Wellness Department, in partnership with the San Bernardino County, have provided professional development, resources, and information to our school counselors to address opioids, as well as other drug and alcohol concerns. Counselors may address the student needs as they arise at their assigned school, not only to discuss the dangers of opioid usage, but also to support students in developing healthy coping strategies to use in replacement of drugs and alcohol. The district has community partners that provide treatment services to students and their families. Additionally, the San Bernardino County has a wealth of resources available to our community as well. In terms of an emergency response, in partnership between the Office of Safety and Emergency Management, our District Police Department, and the Student Wellness and Support Services, currently over four hundred staff members are now trained in Narcan administration as an emergency response to an opioid overdose. These staff members include school administrators, athletic directors, trainers, coordinators, and coaches, as well as our campus security officers, our police officers, school nurses, licensed vocational nurses, health aides, CAPS leads, and a myriad of other people interested in attending the training. And it is still open in an on-demand version as well, so people can access and take the training at any point in time. Our Narcan supplies were ordered through our Office of Safety and Emergency Management, Officer Vatir, through our state of California. Our initial supply includes the Narcan doses, CPR masks, and gloves that you see pictured here for staff usage when providing Narcan and rescue breathing to a person suffering from any opioid overdose. The first shipment has been distributed to all of our middle and high school health offices, school nurses, campus security officers, our police officers, and all of our emergency personnel. Our next shipment will be deployed to our athletic coaches, elementary school health offices, and additional staff across the district. Additionally, our school administrators will have the option of self-carrying as well, so they will have it on their person should they choose to. We really do want to get this message out to our community, and especially to our students that it most directly affects. So David Chavez, from our amazing communication team, reached out to the talented students from a Royal Valley High School who used their knowledge and skills developing through their CTE film and photo production class to create a fentanyl awareness video for their peers. When you see it, I think you'll agree, it is a very powerful message. We plan to share it with our students and community, and we've already heard from other organizations who would like to share it beyond our district. We are debuting it here for you first, so that you may have the opportunity to recognize the students and the staff who made this happen. To introduce their team and their video, please welcome Mr. Dimitri, Dimitri Cronopoulos and Mr. Eduardo Mejia Lopez.
Good evening, Board, President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, members of the Board and Executive Cabinet. My name is Dimitri Cronopoulos. I'm the Link Learning Program Specialist at a Royal Valley High School, and also the CTE Department Chair. I am honored to introduce one of our own homegrown talents, Mr. Eduardo Mejia Lopez. Mr. Mejia is not only an alumni of AVHS, he's a proud product of our teaching academy. As a CTE photo and film instructor in the Digital Media Arts Academy, and a web design and develop instructor in the Animation Tech Academy, he has been able to pass on his love for the digital media arts and the 21st century skills our students need and desire to acquire. In front of you today, you have the future of San Bernardino, the educator, the students that will make this city once again an all-American city. Mr. Mejia.
Thank you, Ms. Cronopoulos, and good evening, Board and Cabinet. I am extremely grateful for this recognition of my, the work that my students put in to create this, this video. When we were told about this mission to help spread awareness to students here in San Bernardino of this ongoing epidemic of fentanyl, me and my students jumped on it, jumped on it, and we created this video with the idea and message that students and parents here in San Bernardino and wherever this video may end up can ultimately lead to somebody saving a life. This recognition goes out to my students who put in the hard work and to pretty much help me put this, me and David Chavez, help us put this vision together. To start, thank you Diego Cruz for his ideas and directing skills, Vania Pizarro and Maritza Amuesco for their writing, audio, and camera work, and Johnson and Michelle Miranda for everything they did, both in front of the cameras and behind the scenes. And last but not least, the faces of Juan Ye Morris and Natalie Ruiz for being the voices to help spread this message. I can't express how much this means to me and how much me and my students appreciate this recognition. Once again, thank you, Board and Cabinet members.
Hey, listen up. Too many kids in our areas are dying from drug overdoses. What you're about to hear can save your life.
Fentanyl is a deadly drug that is being made into fake pills and mixed into other drugs to drive addiction. Just one pill can kill.
Overdoses related to fentanyl have been increasing at a rapid rate here in California. Mostly among young people. These cases have been growing at an alarming rate, especially here in our community.
Fake pills with fentanyl are made to look like other pharmaceuticals. These fake pills can be easily found online and contain no legitimate medicine.
Fentanyl is also made in a rainbow of colors, so it looks like candy. It only takes a small dose of fentanyl to be deadly, such as the amount found on the tip of this pencil.
Fentanyl can cause confusion, drowsiness, and dizziness, as well as other symptoms listed on the screen, which in some cases can cause respiratory failure and lead to death.
This is my son, Alexander. He died at fourteen years old from fentanyl poisoning.
This is our daughter, Jessica. She was twenty-nine years old when she was killed by fentanyl.
This is my daughter, Alex. She was murdered at twenty years old by a drug dealer who sold her a counterfeit pill made of fentanyl.
This is my son, Daniel Joseph Puerta Johnson, killed at the age of sixteen by illicit fentanyl.
Visit DEA.gov/OnePill for more information and other resources for parents and caregivers.
If you or someone you know needs help, please reach out to an adult you trust or call the county's Department of Behavioral Health Substance Use 24-hour helpline.
Please don't do drugs. We need you alive. If you're struggling with drugs, reach out and get help right away.
Thank you again so much for, to Mr. Cronopoulos, Mr. Mejia Lopez, and your amazingly talented students for all of your hard work to bring this subject to life in such a meaningful way. We have certificates for each of the students and would like to invite the Board members and Cabinet to join them for a quick picture acknowledging their lifesaving work. Please join us now to come out of this presentation with a recognition photo together. Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
All righty, folks, maybe don't leave yet, because as the other groups have learned, when the lights are on, that's usually a good thing, so. Got lots of light, well, oh, a couple of lights on. There should be more, okay. Vice President Tillman, let's go. Vice President Tillman, let's go.
A question? Thank you very much. And just for clarity, so in case of a fentanyl overdose, does the Narcan work with that?
It does. It works with fentanyl. It also works with all other opioids as well. So whether they're synthetics or real, true drugs, you will find that pharmacies that, where doctors are prescribing actual opioids for, for medical concerns, oftentimes they're also issuing a Narcan to give to another trusted adult, just in case there's an accidental overdose as well.
We have the Narcan at the middle schools and the high schools?
Yes, and we will have the second shipment at elementary schools as well.
And how many doses are at each site?
Right now, there are two doses in the health office, a dose on every single campus security officer assigned to the site, which are both middle school and high school. All of our school nurses, we now have 34 of those folks, so 34 school nurses, five licensed vocational nurses that travel around the district doing medical procedures every day, our police officers, which there's one of those on every one of our high school campuses, and all of the other officers supporting and their sergeants and their leadership team as well. We could quiz Chief over there and see if he has it on him right this minute.
And all those people you named, I want to assume, so I'm asking, they've all been to some type of training?
Yes, so we did mass, masses of trainings in October, November, and December, where we held people, brought them in. Narcan is very easy to use. It is almost dummy-proof where I could look at it, look at the instructions really quick and use it, which is fantastic. It's very easy to use. But we have provided all of those people training with an assessment at the end to ensure that they understand exactly what and when they would use that product.
And what are the signs? Someone's passed out and then?
It can be that they're passed out. It can be that their pulse rate is either very faint or nonexistent. It can be that their lips or their fingertips are blue in color. It can be that you can't get a pulse, or they are either shallow breathing or not breathing at all. It can be that they're very, very sleepy. You're shaking them, pinching them, yelling their name, and they won't wake up. So there's several different ways it can look. And then just to add, if we find somebody in a passed out or unconscious state, we're erring on the side of caution and telling people to go ahead and do the Narcan administration first, and then begin your rescue breathing, because it's not going to harm anybody if they're not actually suffering from an opioid overdose. So we give it to them and then start that rescue breathing.
Is there a window of time when you have to administer it?
Time is of the essence, because as your body's metabolizing the opioids, so the sooner we can get it to them, the better, which is why when we get the second shipment of Narcan, it will also be distributed to like those PE areas, those coaches, because since time is of the essence, you know, our campuses tend to be a little large when you're running from place to place, so we want to make sure it's in as many places as possible as the supply demands. So we don't want to hang on to any supply. We want to make sure it's out there at our schools.
Does it expire?
It does expire, and I believe it's two years. And then we'll have a replacement plan, just like our EpiPens. So we have replacements of our EpiPen process as well.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you Vice President Tillman, Mrs. Rosales Medina.
With regards to the production, amazing work, because I'm a big movie fanatic, and I think when you tell stories and stories are being told in a way that you get chills, I mean, you did the job that needed to be done. And I think when, when I was looking at the video, there was parts and moments where I did get the chills and I knew you were doing what's needed in order for people to feel the, the sense of urgency of knowledge and so forth. So I just want to say thank you all for doing that video. I'm hoping, and I'm sure the district will be sharing that on our, on our social media pages, on our website as well, and then also making sure that we're including the recognition of those that are, are part of that project and getting that done. So first of all, amazing work, and thank you so much for doing that. I do want to ask if there has been any cases within our school district or the city that have come up, and if there has been, how many?
So within our district, there hasn't been any.
Okay.
We know, so I don't track those fentanyl overdoses in the community, but I can tell you that it is in the community. If you follow the San Bernardino City Police Page or read the news, they have found in either car searches or home searches, supplies of fentanyl or poundage of fentanyl as well. So it's here in our community, which is all the more reason to share the information as soon as possible.
Right, and I think it's important to, to create prevention measures before, and so that's why I was asking, but I'm glad that we're, we're, we're ahead of the game in making sure that students within our school district, you know, are well-protected and making sure that they're, they're receiving the knowledge that's necessary. So thank you so much, and against to the whole team as well and students.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosales Medina, Ms. Wiles.
Thank you, and I'm not going to repeat, you know, great job. I just have a question as to where I can find the video, or if I can have that sent to me, to my email. Thank you so much. And then if we could, just to follow up on Ms. Rosales Medina's question, if we could maybe get like an update on, you know, kind of like the city or the county, if there has been any cases of overdose. I think I'd like, I'd be interested in kind of keeping an eye on that. I'm glad to hear that it hasn't, you know, come to our district per se, but, so yeah, if we can maybe incorporate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles, and then a couple of recognitions. First of all, Mr. Eduardo Valenzuela, the principal's here in Arroyo Valley. Just want to make sure we said hello to you too, sir. To our students and staff, job well done. You know, often the message for students to hear is from other students. Right, we could tell them a million times as parents or as adults, and they might not just listen to us, but when their peers tell them, that has a whole different effect, right? So great job on doing that video. I also want to acknowledge probably the top advocate in our area for battling fentanyl and this war on fentanyl, and that's my friend Steve out there. I get always emotional when I see him. Steve Filson, that's the founder of Void, and he and his, his friend, and you know, the experiences that he's gone through himself with his own family. And, you know, I met him a number of years ago, and this has been a top party for me for a number of years. And so I'm really happy, Steve, to see your work reach so many people in so many districts and so many cities. So hopefully, we can save more lives, because this does happen. I had two staff members lose, one lose a son, and then another one lose an uncle over the holidays to fentanyl. So it is very real, and it's in our area, as you saw in the videos, 100 pounds of fentanyl in San Bernardino City. That's an insane amount, just so you guys know. And so let's keep up this, this war on fentanyl, this battle. And, you know, Steve, just again, good seeing you, and thank you for working with our staff and our kids and bringing this awareness to our entire community. Yes, sir. Come on up, Steve. It's always a pleasure to see you. If you didn't see him in the video, he was in the video. The video was sent to me last week, and when seeing it, it brought me to tears. I'm sorry, I'm a big guy, I'm a retired police officer, but I don't, I don't care. I'll cry any minute. You kids are doing what we have been attempting to do for months. San Bernardino City Unified gets it. San Bernardino City Unified Police Department gets it. San Bernardino Police Department gets it. Our educators get it. Our students, most importantly, get it, and they're spreading that word. Ms. Wiles, the answer? Jessica was killed in 2020. In 2019, there were 46 deaths countywide. In 2020, that rose to 178. In 2021, it was 405. And as of May of last year, the deaths in San Bernardino County were somewhere around 180, and there were still 500 causes of death to be determined by the coroner's office. It's an epidemic. The only thing that's going to save lives at this particular time is education and awareness. And thank God, our prayers are answered, that it hasn't happened in our community yet with our students in the schools. Let's keep the prayers going. Let's keep the movement going, and bless you kids. I love you all, and I need to get a picture with you before you leave. So, thank you for letting me speak. Now, thank you, Steve, and again, thank you to our team. Great job. We're available to give presentations anywhere you want. Give us an audience and we'll talk. Thank you, Steve. If you haven't heard from Orange County yet, you will. So, I've been passing your name on all over the state, so. Alright, folks, that is a very sensitive topic, but we have to keep it at the front of our conversation and not turn our back on it, because that is our job. We'll move on to 3.0, 3.1, receive public comments. Alright, this is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda and with their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person, simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Alright, we will start with our first public comment, and individual is Mr. Richard Aguilar. Welcome, Mr. Aguilar.
Hello, Board President, Board Vice President, members of the Board. My name is Richard Aguilar. I am the Principal of Options for Youth in San Bernardino. I don't have some well-spoken high school students with me or some videos of some adorable elementary school students performing projects, but I did want to brag about some of the great things our students are doing at our school. Our Student Council voted, and they decided to participate in a beach cleanup community service event at Huntington Beach. Our students combined to collect 40 pounds of trash from the beach and the surrounding community. Closer to the home that same month in December, our Student Council collected over 100 toys that were donated to the Winter Wonderland Christmas Toy Drive here in San Bernardino. In November, our school sent students to an experiential learning field trip to Europe to visit key sites associated with World War II. Students reported that they made deep connections and felt moved by visiting sites such as Normandy Memorial Cemetery, as well as concentration camps. Our Counseling Department hosted two FAFSA nights in December, where we invited seniors and guardians to complete the FAFSA with staff support, and we're proud to have 87 seniors apply for financial aid. I just want to end this presentation by saying thank you for the support of the district, the Board, for partnering with us and targeting us as a charter school with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Alright, our next public speaker is Ms. Fatima Christina Adami. Come on up.
I don't have delicious cookies, so I will have to suffice. Good evening, Board President, Dr. Scott Wyatt, Board members, Cabinet, staff, and community in attendance. My name is Fatima with the California Charter Schools Association. It is my honor to be here tonight at the first board meeting of another monumental year in education. It has been some time since I have had the opportunity to join you in person, so I'm excited here tonight with all of you and support of all students in our district, and I have a lot of comments, so forgive me, I haven't been here in a while. Better late than never. On behalf of our association and our 12 charter schools, let me first start by welcoming the two newest trustees to the Board, Ms. Mary Allen, and I'm going to butcher your names until I get it right, Abiles Grande, and Ms. Chahaski. Hopefully, Ms. Mickey Chahaski. I'm going to practice that one, I promise. I have had the privilege of working with this Board for over 10 years, and I'm elated to now share the many opportunities at our local charters with both of you, along with our returning Board members, Mr. Tillman and Ms. Rosales Medina. I also wanted to thank Dr. Daudie Rogers for her years of service on the Board and congratulate her on her new position at the County Board of Ed. I didn't get a chance to say goodbye to her when you all had a beautiful ceremony for everyone. One of the many ways we like to share what's happening at our charter schools is by inviting you to visit our schools. If you haven't already, please do so at your convenience. The second is by coming to your meetings and sharing verbally with you the exciting things happening at our charters. Options for Youth tonight is exemplifying that. For our SBC-USC-approved charters, we meet monthly to discuss best practices, and volunteers take place in turns to come before you to present monthly. We invite you to join us at our February meeting on the 9th at 10:00 a.m. at Entrepreneur High School, San Bernardino, on Highland Avenue. It is our hope that eventually you will see all of our charter schools come through here, at least at one of your board meetings throughout the year. The third way is by inviting you to our annual Charter School Conference. Earlier today, I took the liberty of emailing you an invitation to our annual Charter Schools Conference, which is taking place March 13th through the 16th in Sacramento. For the two newest Board members, I emailed the Board Secretary since your emails are not yet posted on the website. I also wanted to thank you for the opportunity to honor and celebrate Dr. Hill every day, but now officially on January 22nd. The holiday seasons have also come and gone, but I wanted to personally thank Board President Dr. Scott Wyatt. In collaboration with San Bernardino County Board Member Ms. Rita Fernandez-Louve, county staff, and probation staff, and many, many, many volunteers, we were able to bring the holiday celebrations to our, to the incarcerated youth in our county. Made, made impossible, made almost impossible, but possible for us, to remind our youth that their mistakes do not define them or their future, and that there's an entire community waiting for them with love and open arms. If only by allowing us to deliver pizza and some small gifts. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. It really made my holiday to be able to do that. Thank you. Lastly, I wanted the remainder of my time to introduce you to Ms. Samantha Stacklehouse, who's in the back of the room. She is the newest member of our team, member of our team here at CCSA. Ms. Stacklehouse is a product of our county charter, having graduated from Excelsior Charter School in the high desert. She holds various degrees from UC Santa Barbara and UC Riverside. She's done research on pre-pandemic policies for students in the classroom, and I wanted to, for you to formally meet her, because as I look to grow in my position here at CCSA, there will be opportunities where I can't come. So hopefully now we have more staff, and eventually I can retire knowing that the students we service are replacing us. So, thank you again for your continued support of all students, and we look forward to another productive year ahead. Thank you so much.
Ms. Adami, I want to say thank you to you and our Board Member, County Board Member Rita Fernandez-Louve for doing something so amazing and generous, such an act of kindness. I get a little, you know, I get emotional about this for my students that are detained in our juvenile court school programs in both facilities. I've been doing this a long time. I started in 1994, and I have never seen such an act of kindness from folks during the holidays that you guys did, you and your team, for our students. So thank you again.
Thank you for making it possible. Thank you.
Alrighty, our next public comment is Charlene Bollinger. I hope I got that right. Bollinger, come on up, please.
Now just to remind the people in the audience, if you want to speak, you have to fill out a blue form. You can get that form from the gentleman in the corner there. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
Did I get that right? Is it Bollinger or Bollinger?
Bollinger.
Bollinger, okay, very good.
Alright, well, I'd like to say thank you for being here and being able to stand in front of you guys tonight. I need to be able to bring my concerns to you guys.
Can you get closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm a parent of a student with disabilities in the Special Education Department. There's a serious need for change with the Special Education Department. My daughter has been with, having an IEP since the first grade. I brought this to the school's attention as she has diagnosis of ADHD. Throughout the years, it has gotten worse. She has ADD, mood dysregulation disorder, which is bipolar, anxiety, and depression. And this even started before the age of five, but could not be diagnosed until then. I have been finding this schools since the first grade. Yes, my daughter is a loving, caring, sweet, young girl. We all understand that. Maybe it's because they can't see her underlying diagnosis, maybe not seeing the true disability that she does have. My daughter is second, third grade level now at Golden Valley in the seventh grade. She is not in the correct placement. I have fought to get her either one-to-one. Finally, the school had, go ahead and put on the table that there is a mild moderate SEC program, and we had everything scheduled for a meeting. The day before the meeting, they had said that canceled, that the district needs more information, more evaluation, because she did just start an extra learning program. because she did just start an extra learning program, or class, you would say. But my daughter needs more. She needs attention, and I see this a lot with other kids and in the community that I talk to of other parents, too. The district and the schools are letting these kids fall through the cracks. You know, the principals could be there one minute saying, "Oh, I care, and we need to get this under wraps before she gets to eighth grade and before she gets to high school and everything," and nothing's being done. There's also been a problem of safety with my daughter throughout all these years. Started with Lincoln. Two different times she had gone missing. First, they called me within 15 minutes, she was gone for an hour. Second time, they called me after an hour, she was gone for an hour and 30 minutes. Continued on when she went to Bradley Elementary, found in the bathroom making slime or hidden on the playground or in a location she shouldn't be. Now that she's in middle school at Golden Valley, last day of school for winter break, we did find out something with Lily. We're like, "Okay, we're not going to go ahead and, you know, continue on with after-school programs until we find like a safety net for her." Or if I could at least get communication back from the school that I had been requesting. Well, this last Thursday, I knew something was wrong. My daughter never showed up on the special ed bus, which drops her off curb-to-curb. We started worrying, we're like, "Okay, maybe the bus is running late." Then we had noticed, you know, Dad seen a message from her. It was very weird to us because she's like, "Oh, go in the chair, see you later." That's not how she communicates with us. Then her phone was turned off. Then we noticed last location was some apartments behind the school. I immediately called the school, bringing it up. Mind you, the first day of school at that school, I had a talk with the vice principal and let them know the situation of her AWOLing, as the school likes to say, and going missing. That was one of my major things. So with that being said, she had disappeared. The school had confirmed that she left cheer early. Me and Dad were playing Detectives, the school did not care at all, at all. I've asked them to call the school police, not once, but twice. They ended up just giving me the number. And then I asked if the principal was even made aware of the situation. I asked them, "Can you please search the bathrooms since she had issues with hiding out in the bathrooms before?" "No, but there was more than eight members occupying the office." The principal was our vice principal, you know, other staff members even, and I don't know if it was security or not, them too. My husband found them down at Starbucks on 40th and Waterman. My daughter has IEP and special ed, mind you, so I'm kind of curious why she would even be off the school property. Even the receptionist, he made that statement saying that she was off school campus. Then I told them I was going to go outside and look to see if my daughter was maybe in the other area. I came back, they locked me out. Then now, the vice principal came huffy-puffy, trying to tell me, "Oh, well, is she enrolled in CAPS? She needs to be enrolled in CAPS, so that way if she leaves early, she'll be checked in and so on and so forth." But I don't know what else to do.
All right, Ms. Bolinger, and I believe Ms. Applegate, our Assistant Superintendent. She's over our Special Education Department, someone from her and Golden Valley.
I will be at the back of the room to get your information, and of course, we will look into this matter and assist you as best we can. I apologize for that, and we'll take care of it.
And Ms. Bolinger, we have a couple questions for you from the board. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that to us, and I know it's not easy. It'd be horrifying for any parent to go through, so I do appreciate you coming forward, and we should be able to find some solutions for you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Sevios?
I just want to say I'm sorry on behalf of the board and the district because I know how extremely frustrating that can be. And we've all heard you, and we thank you for coming, and we hope that it gets fixed and solved immediately. But if it doesn't, here is my number. I'm not going to get involved, but I do want to make sure that I follow the process and that you are receiving attention and it's not getting left behind. So, you are more than welcome to call and text, but like they said, they'll be, you know, taking your information. Thank you.
All right, thank you again for coming tonight and voicing your concerns to us.
I wish I had more time.
Ms. Applegate is going to give you that time right now in the back, and Ms. Sevios is passing her number on to you as well. All right, we're going to move on to the next public comment. Squire Timothy Prince, come on up, sir.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, staff, parents, and guests. My name is Tim Prince. I was born and raised in this community, and I'm currently practicing attorney for 30 years in San Bernardino, president of the Native Sons of the Golden West and the Democratic Luncheon Club of San Bernardino. But I'm not here representing those great organizations. I'm here more as a graduate of the 100th class of San Bernardino High School. I think I just barely missed Ms. Chahaski in the band, but it was such a prideful experience to march in a band where a guy like Danny Tillman was playing the drums, and the beat was thundering. I went on to University of California at Berkeley, where my daughter is currently a student. And then I went to the University of California in San Francisco Law School. It was really great to hear the Pledge of Allegiance led by the children because I know that's why you all are here, and that's why all of us are here. I'm not here today to talk to you about the dirty aspect of politics, but as a political scientist, I'm here to share with you something from political science that I think will be helpful in next week's special meeting and in choosing your provisional vacancy appointment. I'm not here to speak in favor of any candidate, but I see something very significant, and I've heard a couple of comments out in the community. Maybe somebody on this board heard that or shared that, so I wanted to give my perspective on that. And that is in the potential appointment of Dr. Barbara Flores, who I have supported in the past. So, this is not a personal thing, it's informational. You wouldn't make it past the introductory political science classes at Cal Berkeley without understanding thoroughly the advantage of incumbency. My friend Danny Tillman has that advantage through seven terms, and that's partially because he's a great guy with a great heart, and he works hard. I'll never forget when he found those music funds to save our music program. But you don't have to campaign for reelection the same on your seventh time as you do on your first time. And incumbents have a number of advantages that were subjects of multiple lectures and units in my studies. You have the name recognition. Everybody knows, even if you're not a political scientist, you know that name recognition is the single most important thing in elections. You have a huge financial advantage in raising money, and that's always the biggest challenge, the one that we don't like the most. You have access to information if you're sitting on the board. Incredible amounts of information and an incredible advantage there. You have the prestige of the office, so you don't start from... We like to think in America that everybody starts from an equal position. Incumbents don't start from an equal position. You all know this, but I don't know if you've really thought of it in this context. You have the opportunity through your service to help people. Those people remember you, those people vote for you. Now, why is all this significant? Well, I've heard the comment made that, "Well, Dr. Barbara Flores just lost by a few votes, so maybe we should appoint her." That is completely wrong, and it ignores the significance of Ms. Grande's victory. She started with no advantage and no funds. And I'm not saying that just to congratulate Mary Ellen Grande. Congratulations, by the way, which I've told you before. The reason I'm stating it is because the voters spoke, and they spoke with a loud and clear voice. This board has had a tough time. I don't need to tell you that. I've heard some really positive comments the last couple of meetings about the way you all are working together, about the camaraderie that's developing, about your bright future for this district. This district needs a bright future. We're not in a good place. Student, if I can just sum up real quick, student achievement is at an embarrassing low. So, this board needs to start fresh. This board needs to consider that the incumbent advantage didn't work for Dr. Flores, and we need to go forth together in a united direction. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. All righty, our next public speaker, we've seen him once tonight, but come on up. Welcome again, Steve Vilson. Steve, we shared a same writing style, I see.
I've already said my piece, but one thing I did want to add is we avoid contacted the DEA in Los Angeles. I forwarded the video to them. They wanted immediately to post it, and I said, "Could you please wait till Tuesday? It's going to be debuted with the school board, and then they'll put it out." And most excitedly, it's going to be forwarded to the DEA Administrator Ann Milgram in Washington, DC. And I guarantee you, she will watch it, and I guarantee you will hear from her. She's a wonderful lady. She's very aggressive in her efforts with the DEA in attacking, not only from an enforcement angle, but an education and awareness angle associated with fentanyl. But again, you guys are doing a great job. The district's doing a great job, and wow, what a group of kids we got. Our future's good. Thanks again.
Steve, I think you know now you are not alone in this fight. You're darn right you can, and thank you again for being here. All righty. All righty, our next public speaker, and forgive me if I get this wrong, is Corey Holloman? Holloman? Oh, maybe just stepped out. Do we have any others? I hope, and it's for an RFP, so we'll see if he's still here, or she, it could be a she. No online, okay. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, everyone, board members and community members. Sorry about that, I stepped out to blow my nose. But I'm here today to first introduce myself. My name is Corey Holloman, the founder of 2020 Vision Youth, a nonprofit founded here in San Bernardino, California. I'm also a local San Bernardino native, attended a number of the elementary schools, Shannon Hills, Curtis, went to Pacific, and finished up at Aquinas High School. So, we have a nonprofit that was founded here, and we work with the youth here. We're working with a couple charter schools. We were working with PSA, and we are currently working with Dewayne Raden Senior. He's at Powell Charter Academy. We're at the high school and junior high. So, I'm here to speak on the proposal that we proposed to the district. They put out a bid for RFP 2215. We submitted a proposal, and we are in the evaluation stage now. So, I thought it'd be a good idea to stop in and briefly describe, you know, some of the things that we offer here in the community and what was inside of our proposal. And what we were proposing to the district, they're looking for enrichment programs. So, we're proposing to do a lifetime fitness enrichment at the West Side Cluster, which includes 11 schools here on the west side of San Bernardino. And the Fit for Life program teaches the kids the baseline fitness fundamentals, which would be cardio, flexibility, endurance, stretching, and core strength. And we provide those opportunities to the students through fun games and activities. So, instead of having them run sprints 100 times, we will play an entertaining engagement game like Sharks and Minnows to where it's more fun and more engaging to run, and they are able to communicate and pick up different skills. And once we produce those different skills and teach them those skills, we will be able to measure them at the end of our six-week program by having an event, a cumulative event for all the students in the program, which would be a track meet because that is something that you can run in, you can jump in, you could use your core strength, you could use your endurance. So, the teachers, students, community members will be able to measure how the students were able to pick up the skills that we were teaching them. So initially, we will conduct a baseline fitness test and see where they're able to stretch, see what their speeds are, see how they're able to jump. So then at the end of the program, we can sit here and say, "Hey, remember Carlos, he could only stretch two meters. Now he can stretch four meters. His 40-yard dash was five seconds, now it's actually four seconds." So, the kids can take these skills and apply them to life. So, they're not sports-specific like baseball, basketball, or football. It's actual lifetime fitness. And we have seen that the students that attend our programs, their grades have increased, their attendance has increased, their behavioral issues and referrals and things have decreased because we're giving them something to look forward to. One, and two, we're also putting kids in real-life situations such as competitions, such as public speaking, and they're also able to jot down all of their progress in the journals that we provide them. So, on day one, you'll see certain students only able to do certain things versus day 12, where you can see that they're further along in the process. And once we finish at one school, we propose to move to the next school in the cluster, therefore hitting all 11 schools in the cluster in the semester. So then at the end of the 11 schools in the cluster, we will have a cumulative event, which would be a track meet for all 11 schools that we visited. So then they can compete against each other, and the parents, the staff, students, administrators can all come out and enjoy the gains and the different things that the students were able to take away from our program, and will also have time for reflection so that the students can reflect with their parents, reflect with the community members on what their goals were and how they came along. So, that was our proposal, and you guys ask, "Where have I done that at or where have we done that before?" I actually was a site lead with CAPS for two years. I was at Brown, I'm sorry, at Brown Elementary was my second year. My first year was at Thompson, and we did this exactly what I described, and we actually opened it up to the school. So, CAPS, we had about 140 kids there, I believe. So, when we did the track meet, we had 322 kids because we opened it up to the school. So, we had more kids sign up for CAPS after that as well because they wanted to take part in activities and different things like this. I'm running out of time, so I don't want to, you know, run over. But just to summarize, I wanted to bring you guys in on, you know, what we're proposing to the district. I see a lot of faces that have came out to our community events and things we do here with the kids. So, thank you guys for giving me your time. I also have a copy of the proposal that I submitted to the district minus the documents that the district provided us.
All righty, thank you again. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Holloman, that Lori Cardenas, our Director of Purchasing, will be in contact with you regarding the RFP process. So, expect a call from her in the next couple of days.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
Oh, okay.
Yes, she will be giving those. So, whatever you need to... Yes.
All righty, and I believe there were no virtual comments this evening, Ms. Cunningham? Is that correct? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to 4.0, 4.1, closed session public comments. Any closed session public comments? All right, there are none, so we will go ahead and go into closed session. So, we'll convene this meeting and reconvene after closed session. Thank you. Hopefully, it does not take us long, folks. All right, folks, we do have a quorum, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting back into order. We'll move on to 5.0, actual reporter from closed session. 5.1, approval of interim Associate Superintendent Business Facilities and Operations. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved appointment of following employee, Mohammed Z. Islam, interim Associate Superintendent Business Facilities and Operations. Effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
It's been moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Is Mr. Islam here this evening or no? I don't know if he is. No, he is not. Alright, well, he's not new to the district, but we are definitely wanting to welcome him back. So thank you, Mr. Islam. Looking forward to working with you again. 5.2, approval of science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics, esteemed director. Let me read that real quick. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Randy Clyde, Director, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Mathematics, STEAM, effective date, work year and salary to be determined.
It's been moved.
I'll second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Dr. Clyde, I believe you're still here. Congratulations. Go ahead and stand up. Good to see you again and thank you for your patience. Alright, 5.3, approval of two elementary school vice principals. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved the appointments of the following employees, Joyella Bueller? Bueller? Boy, I hope I got that one right. So please correct me.
Like there.
Bueller, alright, that's what I was hoping for, Bueller. And Natalie Morales, elementary school vice principal, school sites, effective dates, work year and salary to be determined.
It's been moved.
I'll second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Bueller and Ms. Morales. And thank you for your patience as well. Let's please stand up so we can see who you are. Fantastic. Congratulations. And again, thank you for waiting. I really do appreciate that. You're getting used to admin already, so there you go.
Yeah.
Other duties assigned and long hours. Alright, 5.4, expulsion of students. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation findings at the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings and facts and recommendations and orders expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code 48900.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.5. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation finding of facts with the positive youth development and orders suspension or expulsion of following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code 48900.
It's been moved.
I'll second. It's been motioned and properly seconded. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on. 5.6, be resolved, the Board of Education authorized the following students were recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries. We'll move on to 5.7. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorized the readmission of the following student with identification number as indicated below to the schools of the San Diego Unified School District in accordance with the Board's rules and regulations and in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.8. Other closed session action. Give me a second here on this one. Alright, board, on other closed session action, we do have a couple items. There'll be three items. We'll need to motion and approve and vote on them separately. So the first one, be resolved, the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR class 22-23-03-ER.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Move on to 5.8. Number two, be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts a notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to spend without pay for 10 days, the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district, HR-CLASS-S-22-23-04-ER.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Move on to 5.8, which would be number three. We will not have to vote on this and there will not be a discussion. In closed session, the board took action to reject a claim filed by Harry Urban alleging breach of contract, damage to reputation and other basis. The board voted 4-0, Wyatt Sabios Grande and Chuhusky with members Tillman and Rosales Medina recusing themselves. And that is it for that. We'll move on to 6.0, public hearings, 6.1, acceptance and adoption of MOU effects of abolishment and decreases between San Diego Unified School District and California School Employee Association, Chapter 183. Alright, give me a second here. Alright, the public hearing for item 6.1, acceptance and adoption of MOU effects of abolishment and decrease between San Diego Unified School District and California School Employee Association, Chapter 183 is now open. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
Alright, the hearing is now closed. Board, do I have a motion?
It's been moved.
Second? I was asking, I'll second, that's fine. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts Amendment of Understanding Effects of Abolishments and Decreases between San Diego Unified School District and California School Employee Association, CSEA, Chapter 183. I'll go ahead and open our regular board meeting again. We will move on now to 7.0, reports by union organizations, 7.1, San Diego Teachers Association.
No report.
No report, 7.2.
I'm here.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh, my apologies. Oni's here.
Oh, sorry, Ashley. My apologies. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, President Wyatt, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Beto Salcolat, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. Just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and officially give congratulations and welcome to our new board members, McGee Chuhusky and Mary Ellen Abilas Grande, and also to our returning members, Danny Tillman and Abigail Rosales Medina. I too, as my Vice President did last month, would like to also acknowledge Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers and Dr. Barbara Flores for their years of service to our school community and wish them all the best. Last month, our SBT A Vice President, Barbara Passachek, came before you to bring to your attention a very important matter that concerns all of our bargaining unit members. And that is the issue of our members being paid in a timely manner for the extra duties that they have been performing on a regular basis above and beyond their regular work assignments since the start of the school year. As of today, we're aware that the district has taken steps over the last month to process all of the payments that were still outstanding. And my understanding as of today also is, as you can see in your personnel report that's before you for approval tonight and over 140 pages, that they are catching up. However, to date, those payments have not yet hit the pay warrants or the bank statements. We are hopeful that at your next meeting, I'll be able to report that all of these payments have been included in the February pay warrants. I do also want to let you know that we are aware the district is taking steps currently to improve their internal system, so this does not happen again. But I do want to remind you, as Barbara did last month, that our members already work many unpaid hours above and beyond their current actual work time. And ensuring timely compensation for work already performed ensures the continuity of these quality programs for our students. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Alcar. Good to see you. Alrighty, 7.2, California School Employee Association.
No report.
Alright, thank you. No reports. 7.3, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Thank you very much. 7.4, San Diego School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Alrighty, very good. Thank you. 8.0, reports and presentations. I am going to ask if we can move 8.3 up so our guests that is here this evening can leave. We have Mr. Dennis Mobley here from County Schools. Would that be okay with consensus from the board? Alrighty. Mr. Mobley, welcome. Thank you for being patient. I'm going to say that to everyone tonight.
And thank you. It's my pleasure to be here. And let me first say, congratulations to new and returning board members. And also, how much I enjoyed the student presentations earlier this evening. It's clear that the district is many, doing many good things on behalf of students that it serves. Mr. President, members of the board, executive staff and community members, my name is Dennis Mobley. I'm the Governance Consultant for the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. I have more than 45 years of communications experience in public education, including 21 years as a former school board member in a neighboring unified school district. As a neutral third party, I have been asked to assist the board with the process to appoint a replacement member. It is my pleasure to be here to assist in that regard. My goal is to assist with a process that is fair, consistent, open, transparent and respectful to all parties involved. On January 13th, I had virtually met with Board President Wyatt and staff to review procedures for filling the board vacancy. Last year, I worked with the board through a similar process. The questions used at that time or before you as a starting point for selecting the interview questions to be used in this round. Each board member will have one question to ask of each interviewee. And we'll get to the question selection a little bit later. Any person is eligible to be a governing board member without further qualifications if they are 18 years of age or older, a citizen of the state of California, a resident of the district, a registered voter and not legally disqualified from holding civic office. The appointee will hold office until the next governing board member election cycle, which occurs November 5th, 2024. It's my understanding, on Monday, the list of 10 candidates will be posted publicly and on the district's website. I don't know who they are at this point, but I understand that they will be made public at that time. The meeting on the 24th is a special board meeting and not a regular meeting of the board. At special meetings, public comments are limited to the topic on the agenda, which is to appoint an individual to the vacancy. This means that comments on other matters of district operations will not be allowed. Secondly, the district has a very generous time limit for public speakers. I will request the public speakers at the meeting on the 24th that they keep their comments brief and that a simple statement of one's name, the name of the candidate supported and a brief comment is sufficient. Speakers who follow wishing to offer to support for similar candidate or the same candidate should do so without duplicating comments of the previous speaker. If affirmed by the board tonight, the questions will be known to the candidates in advance of the interview, which gives them ample time to prepare answers. If the board agrees to these procedures, then on the 24th, I will keep an eye on the proceedings for fairness and consistency. For example, during the interviews, the board members may not add or substitute questions. And this is a process that was used a year ago. Each interview will be timed for 15 minutes. That allows for two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for each question and one minute for closing. Knowing the questions in advance, candidates should be able to manage the time limit for the interview. So if they wish to speak longer on questions, say four, five and six, they can do so, but they still only have the 15-minute time slot. Prior to the start of the board meeting on the 24th, we will have a mandatory orientation for all board candidates. This will start at 4 o'clock. The purpose of the orientation is to review the interview process and cover basic information on the, about being a member of the board. I will give a brief overview of the Brown Act or the Open Meeting Law. And also candidates will be, draw numbers to determine the order of interviews. And they can ask clarifying questions about the process. Thereafter, the candidates will be sequestered until their name is called for interview. While sequestered, candidates may not view the live stream of the board meeting. Staff has graciously offered to provide food and beverages for the candidates in the sequestered room. And upon completing the interview, candidates may stay in the boardroom to hear the responses of those candidates who follow. When it comes time for the board to deliberate, I must emphasize that everything needs to be done in open session. There is no closed session, there's no secret ballots. Now, you just came out of a closed session where you discussed personnel items. And that's proper for the board to do. But a, holding a seat as a member of the board, that's a public office. And so all of your deliberations are in open session and public. A value practice after having conducted the interviews is for each board member to make general comments about the candidates. I have every confidence that you will hear some outstanding individuals who have applied for the position. Thereafter, each board member can focus on their top two or perhaps top three individuals. Staff will capture these names on the screen. And after all board members have had a chance to comment, a pattern may emerge with a candidate, one candidate or two that are, that is high on everyone's list. If so, the president may entertain a motion. so, the president may entertain a motion and a second to name the individual to the vacant seat. After discussion, the board can vote. With four votes, the action passes. If the vote is split, then another name can be put forward, but it also can occur multiple times and even give reconsideration to an earlier candidate who was previously nominated. Upon action by the board to appoint, the appointee shall be considered a member-elect until given the oath of office. With no objections, I will assume there is consensus of the board, and the meeting on the 24th will be conducted in the manner so outlined. So with that, I don't know if you have any questions. The next step would be for you to select your questions to ask of each of the candidates. That concludes my remarks.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mobley. Any questions for Mr. Mobley from the board? All right. Ms. Abilas Grande?
Well, if we have 10 candidates, when we vote for them, do we rank them?
A process that...I've worked with several boards, and a process that seems to work well is, and you can go in any order, but individual board members can say, you know, I like candidates three and six. I felt that they addressed the questions well, and they are representative, or whatever is appropriate comment. And so that would be your comment. Staff would recognize those two individuals on the board. Another board member may say, I echo number three, but I also was very impressed with candidate eight. You know, and so as you go through the process, as names are put on the board, there may be a common one or two names that appear, and so that can guide the process. We don't use...I've not used a forced ranking system. I know that's a common practice in personnel, but I think in this case, again, it's all open, and giving your impressions and then naming the top two or three individuals, allowing that to be captured by staff on the screen and for all of the board members as well as the public can see, and then you can go on to a deliberation and make a nomination to name an individual.
All righty, Vice President Tillman.
So I'm clear. I've been through a number of appointments, but after we have the interviews, right?
Mm-hmm.
Normally, the next step in the process in the meeting is you have the ability to make a nomination. I guess you could have discussion also.
Yeah, deliberation, but it's all in open session.
Right. So just to be...so I'm clear, in the past, we haven't said we're going to rank candidates or even discussion about who you support. It would just be whoever turns their light on first, and then they're recognized. If you have your light on and you say, hey, I like these four candidates, and you name them, you could do that, but then somebody like Ms. Chuhusky could have her light on, and when they go to her, she could say, I nominate Tony Jones. Tony Jones is not applying, but I'm just saying, you know, just, I guess I should have said John Doe. I nominate John Doe. I nominate John Doe, and then once she does that, then we have to take a vote.
Vice President Tillman, I would recommend that each member of the board be able to give their impressions of the candidates and reserve the nomination process until after each board member's had a chance to speak.
Which would be different than what we've done in the past.
Actually, I think we did it that way in the past. Each board member had the opportunity to suggest, you know, make comments about the interview process, acknowledge maybe candidates that stood out in their mind, and those names are all captured on the screen.
Okay.
And then after that occurred is when the board considered a nomination for a particular candidate.
I guess it's just me wishing what...
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Rosales Medina.
I was wondering, part of the discussion, is it also the questions, or no, that's not part of the discussion? The questions that are part of the six questions, can we make edits to it, or what were your thoughts on that?
That's the next step that I would ask the board to complete tonight. The questions before you were the ones that were used a year ago. They can serve as a starting point. You can add or substitute a question, but at the end of the evening, we would like six questions, and each board member then would have one question to ask to the candidate. So you would rotate through until all those questions are asked. Each candidate gets the same question. Now, I did notice a year ago that you had some questions that were two-part questions, which are fine.
Okay.
But that's just a guide, a starting point. If you like those questions, great. If you want to say, I'd rather have this kind of question before the board, before each candidate, that's a purpose of the discussion tonight. But we should complete tonight with the six questions that will be asked of the candidates on the 24th.
And I appreciate that. The reason why I'm asking is like for an example, number six, maybe I can make a suggestion is to edit or remove one of the words. It says, please share any volunteer experiences you've participated in within. I would like to keep it as within San Bernardino City Unified School District because I know that that's, at the end of the day, many of us have been involved within the schools, and that's how we all started. It's not necessarily being coming or being involved outside of the school district. And I understand that there's many great opportunities outside of the school district through community work, but I personally feel that by adding that community, then it kind of, if a person has not really done work within the school district, then they'll go directly to commenting on community, and I don't want to have to follow up or ask them, can you clarify, did you do any work within the school district? So I know for all of us, we've done work within the school district.
That sounds good.
I guess my suggestion would be just to remove the community part and just keep it with SBCUSD.
These are your questions, and then we will also ask each board member to select a question that they would like to ask out of the group of the six.
Okay, thank you. San Bernardino Community, but for me, it's more work within the schools. It could be events, maybe they help organize events within the schools, within schools. Yeah, benefiting our students or, yeah, benefiting our students within there. Yeah. And if that's the case, then I would like to ask that question.
Okay. And I believe staff is capturing the comments of the board.
Okay.
At the...when we reach, go through all of the six questions, can those be displayed on the screen just to confirm that those are the questions that the board will ask? Is that technology possible?
All righty, and while they're doing that, we'll go ahead and continue with the board member comments. Ms. Savios?
Well, I mean, I guess I just wanted to know if we would have...it sounds like you want us to kind of like come to an agreement tonight on the questions that we'd be asking. I was going to ask if we could have a little bit of time to kind of go home and, you know, maybe a day or two to work through these.
I believe these would have to be posted by Friday, right? Or is it different with the special board meeting in regards to posting in advance?
Okay. Again, I'm proposing that we keep the processes open and fair and consistent for all the candidates. So if you, if the board allows for additional think time, then I think that would have to go to the board president to finalize the questions, but they should be available to the candidates in advance. Of course, this meeting is being livestreamed, so people will, in the community, will hear those questions. My preference and recommendation would be if you can establish the questions and who asks those, each question tonight, that is the best. If that is not possible, if President Wyatt would accept comments or revisions, perhaps there's a question that is close to what you want to ask but still requires a little more wordsmithing, at least so we could center in on the topic. Again, I'd like each board member to be able to select a question that they would ask.
Or a follow-up question to that would be, we want to keep it to six questions? Okay. Because I guess for me, one of the questions or, and see, this is part of the reason why I was asking for a little bit more time, because maybe I could work on the wording a little bit better, but something around, you know, how could the board be more transparent with our community as part of like a question? And so I don't know if it could be like maybe a two-part or a three-part question. Maybe we could add it to question one.
They only have 15 minutes, correct?
They have 15 minutes, and again, that would allow for two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for each question, and then one minute for closing. And that's a guideline. They can take more time on one question, less time on another.
All righty, thank you, Ms. West. Was that it?
Yeah.
You want to process that? All right. Ms. Grande?
I'd like to volunteer to ask number four. Please summarize the strengths you would bring in as a member of the board. I like that one.
Anybody have concerns with that? Well, I have to ask, Ms. Grande? They may want, they may have to have a little debate on number four. You never know. So, all right, I hearing none. We'll put your initials next to that. Thank you.
You're too kind.
Well, the board is kind. How's that? All right. I know my name's, I'm looking at my post-its up here, not the names. Ms. Chuhusky. That's the name I'm getting right now.
I'll pick number two.
Okay, let me, all right, Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen, you were four?
Yes.
All right. Mickey, two. Anybody else want to throw a number out there right now? I really don't, matter to me, or draft their new number. How's that?
Did anybody take one?
Nope. It would be you at this time.
Okay, so I would like to take one, but I would like to maybe add that section that I said. So what do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? And then you have on here, what is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose? And how could the board be more transparent with our community in fulfilling that purpose? I know it's a loaded question.
All right, Vice President Tillman, I'm going to defer to you. We have three and five left, sir. Anyone? I'll give you five since it's longer. I'll take three. How's that? All right, Mr. Tillman will take five. I will take three. Ms. Savios, I believe you're the only one that wanted to amend a question, number one. Is that correct? Oh, wait, Ms. Rosales Medina, you wanted to amend number six a little bit? That's correct?
Yes, and that was just to omit the word "community," but I liked what Ms. Grande mentioned, but I just can't recall.
Benefit our students?
Yeah, benefit our students within the school district.
I really do like that. All right, Ms. Savios, do you have any idea on number one?
I read it already.
You did? Okay.
Yeah, did you capture that?
Or did our staff capture that?
What I captured was...
Ms. Ballantyne.
This would be, question one would be a three-part question. The first two parts would remain the same, and the third part would read something to the effect, and how can the board be more transparent in fulfilling that purpose?
All righty, board. Sounds like we have consensus on questions and numbers that we'll be reading. Any other questions for Mr. Mobley? All righty, sir. Thank you again for your time and of course for your patience this evening. We do appreciate you. Now, Dennis, I know you've had a long day.
Yes.
We'll see you in the morning. I actually started in the west end. I'll see you in the afternoon if you're there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And good luck.
Much appreciated. All right, folks, and we are going to make one more adjustment with the board's consensus to go ahead and let our CAPS folks go ahead and report, which I think is 8.2, Extended Learning, Expanded Learning Presentation, excuse me, or ELOs. Is that okay, board? Do we have consensus? So we could get them home at least, I won't even say a decent time at this point, just sometime. All right, folks, come on up. We'll go ahead and do our expanded learning presentation.
So, board, as our fabulous Extended Learning Team comes forward, I want to introduce the Director of Expanded Learning Programs, Ann Pearson.
Thank you. Is there a clicker up here? Someone's going to forward it for me? Thank you, David. Good evening, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Mr. Tillman, Board Members, Cabinet, and there is a few audience members left, so hello to them, too. Tonight, we're going to be presenting you with an overview of our current state of expanded learning, our future plans, as well as a video of our expanded learning journey so far this year. And I do have some other troopers from my department that have come as well. One of them in particular, we're all a team, but the video you're going to see today was by Mr. Ruff. He's very talented, and I hope you enjoy it. That is the best way that we like to show what we've been doing. Go ahead and go to the next slide. All right. Some highlights from our first semester, and really, CAPS is year-round now. With the addition of the roughly $54 million a year from the ELOP, Expanded Learning Opportunity Program funding, and under the direction and vision of Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, the Expanding Learning Department has embarked on a mission to make sure that our scholars have the same opportunities as scholars in more affluent districts and scholars of affluent parents. This is a collaboration across every department in the district, and when I say every department, I truly mean that. You, we are actually going to briefly discuss the many projects that we're funding and/or leading, and we will be showing you a video to actually see it in action. So talking about training, we actually started in July with our first-ever symposium, training all of our youth leaders and site leads. We've also had additional trainings in October, that four-day weekend where the kids had it off. We were doing trainings with our staff. In addition, right after Christmas break started, we are also doing some additional trainings. Coming up, we're really excited, we're going to have our Bird Brain Training, which is hummingbird kits and finch kits, as well as our Vex Robotics. So there's several trainings coming up for our youth leaders and our site leads as well. For those trainings, we're doing this because we've tripled in size. With 11,000 students enrolled in Elementary, Sunrise, and CAPS, 1,700 middle school students are enrolled in CAPS, and 800 high school CAPS attendees. CAPS is offered at all schools now, and Sunrise is at all elementary schools. Next year, we'll offer Sunrise at our secondary to assist with late start. We have dream plans from all the principals. We had these great pot of money, so we asked them to dream big, and they certainly did. This is some of the support we have for our school sites. We've been very lucky to be able to do this. We've had showcases both at Sunrise and CAPS to show off what we're doing. We're leading the way in esports, which I'm sure my older kids were really excited about, but I've had to learn about in the past year. We had a National Lights On After-School Event. You're going to see some of that in the video as well. A couple of our schools called it Glowchella. Super cute. We have lifeguard and swim instructor certification. Those are really pricey certifications. We've been paying for them in collaboration with the YMCA, and we've been able to certify some of our high schoolers and offering it at our high schools, so it's easier for them. Not only has that been done, but it's also coming up. Safety around water, which is referred to as SAW. This is to teach our really littles what to do if they fall into a body of water, whether that be a swimming pool or a lake, how to save themselves and get help. And that's also in collaboration with the YMCA. We have cooking going on, musical theater, art, golf, TK to 12 now. We have boxing. We had $4 million spent on new musical instruments and uniforms for our marching bands, mariachi, and ballet folkloro. We're now leading middle school sports. We have transportation for any student that needs transportation to get to these different events. We have stipends for coaches we're taking care of, new uniforms, improvements to field and lighting. If you asked me how much dirt would cost, I wouldn't be able to tell you, but now I can, to put dirt on our fields to try to help out with the gophers. We have an H2O club sports that were just about ready to kick off. A lot of our kiddos cannot afford club sports, right? They're really expensive. So working with Athletic Strategic Plan, we decided water was the first place to go. Not only is it underrepresented in our district, but it's a safety, right? So as of right now, with our signup set went out, we have, at Arroyo, they're going to be going to their neighboring high schools because that's where the pools are. We have about 31 kiddos that are going to be looking to go to Arroyo Valley. We have about 31 kiddos that are going to be looking to go to Arroyo Valley High School, and San Bernardino High School kids will go there as well. We have about 15 kids at Cajon. Indian Springs High School is also going to take San G because I believe the pool is still being worked on at San G, as well as Pacific Kiddos, and there's 36, and that goes TK through eighth. It could be teaching them how to swim, it could be teaching them how to play water polo. It just depends on their activity level. So those are some of the things on that slide. Not to mention a super fun event we just had called Brick Blast, which you're going to see a little bit of as well. Next slide. So, this is a short little video we have about not only the past six months that I just talked about, but also some coming events. So I hope you enjoy this upcoming video. That's our presentation, thank you very much. And again, a great job with Robert Ruff over here who put that together for us.
Ms. Rosales Medina, you beat me on that one.
This was really exciting to see. I know we've had really great presentations. This one I love because I remember having my children and wanted them to participate in learning how to swim, doing other stuff that we could not afford. And I remember even when YMCA offered it, it was still expensive on certain, at certain points, until they had like a partnership through the school district. But I love the fact that this opens it up for more students within our school district, and it's not necessarily just for those that can afford it, but it's also for those that may not and are still able to participate in grade programs after school. So thank you so much for bringing that presentation for us.
And give Ms. Rosales Medina a look at my colleagues to see if there's any other comments before I go. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes. I just want to thank this team, they are tireless. They are, they are just making things happen. Things that we never thought could happen are happening within our programming. And as you saw, our Brick Blast, that's the first. We'll have another one in September. And it just really exposes students to STEM. We are supporting our day program with our after-school programs and really opening this up for all students in our school district. So this is a start to many great things, and I want to thank Ann and the team, who are just phenomenal. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and I'll just try to make my comments brief to, wow, those were really awesome programs, you know. I know when I first came on to board, CAPS has been one of those priorities for me, so our kids have a safe place to go after school and on the weekend, and even, you know, the early life program, if we have it in the morning. And I, my kids were fortunate to get to go to that, but you guys have evolved quite a bit since then, let me tell you. That Brick Blast, you know, Dr. Rodriguez, I was like, I remember seeing a flyer for that, but I didn't know it was going to look like that. Because I'm, I'm a Lego guy, I'm not going to lie, my kids were Lego folks, and, but that has taken it to a whole different level. I said, hey, did we hire a company for that? She said, no, we did that all on our own. And I was like, wow, that's like expert quality there, professional quality. So our kids are very, very fortunate to have such experiences that I imagine many of them might not have. So, thank you again to you and your team for the creativity that you have and our staff out there. I know this takes all our staff out there to do it together as a team effort, but really am impressed with what we're seeing. And I just found out too, like the mariachi program's part of that, I guess, that's part of the CAPS, and I thought that was through VAPA. So I'm learning little, little things, right, that mean a lot to our kids and our community. So keep up the great work, and I know this board is here to support you for that, so, thank you.
And it is in collaboration with VAPA. It, it is something that we're working together. We had that extra money, so we were able to put it to good use. And that's certainly something that doesn't, that always needs money, right? VAPA always needs the money. And just, also, I forgot to mention, because there's so much stuff, but we also are offering free swim vouchers we're paying for, that we put out to our CAPS kiddos. So, as well as a schedule of classes that the YMCA is doing at the San Bernardino YMCA Highland and Redlands. So they can also, if they want to go and, and take swim classes, we have a voucher for them as well. I forgot about that.
That's amazing, and I know I, even with the, with the collaboration with the district, we still had to pay a small amount, but still had to pay. And in this, there's some people that can't even afford that amount. And so thank you so much for what you're doing. And yes, so many programs that parents look for other outside agencies to provide, but we're now providing it within our school district, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, team, well done, well, well done.
Thank you, good night.
Alright, folks, we had a recommendation, and for those of you that have stuck around for the mid-year report, if you're even left here, thank you. Looks like we have mostly employees, if there's any guests out there, thank you so much for staying with us. But we have had a recommendation to table that to the next meeting, because I think this report's probably going to take quite some time. And again, I apologize to the folks, our executive cabinet and others, but board, how do you feel about that? It is almost 11. I only will do so with consensus, so I have to have a majority consensus to table. That's the reason why we're talking about tabling it, Ms. Grande, but, because it is getting late, and 8.1 is quite a hefty presentation, so we could table it to our next meeting? Yes, ma'am, that's the, the big one.
Yeah, I would, I would support in moving it.
No, we're asking if we can move it to another meeting. Yes, okay. I'm a yes, I'm looking to my left now. Mr. Tillman's a yes. Yes, Ms. Chahuski, you have your light on? Thank you for putting your light on.
I'm, I'm okay with tabling it, but we've sort of cut their, had them wait all night, and then cut, like last time we cut their presentation, this time we're just tabling it? Like, they're not doing it at all? So if we could like look at the agenda so that we're not putting so much on it, so we don't have our employees here...
I didn't think it was going to be heavy when we built it.
Until 11 or midnight, and then tell them, hey, you know...
I know.
Don't do your presentation, or make it short.
Thank you for being empathetic to them, I do appreciate that.
I'd just like us to look at our agenda moving forward.
Absolutely, I agree. Alright, so team, thank you for those of you being here. We do appreciate the work that you put into it, and there is a lot of work here. Just change the date on it, and I think we'll be good. Alright, we'll move on to 9.1 then, board member comments. Let me see if we have an order on here. We do, and we will be starting to my right with Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
I just wanted to say, congratulations to Mr. Tillman, who was recognized this Sunday. I'm looking, and this was for the Black Chamber of Commerce here in the, in San Bernardino. It was a lovely event, I love the music, but the fact that we were there, I, I know Ms. uh... Chahuski. Chahuski, with regards to being there on, was it Sunday? Sunday, right? Saturday. Saturday. And with the rain, but the thing is that, you know, I made sure I was there to support our board member, Danny Tillman, and we were there to support Danny Tillman, as well as others that were recognized. So I just wanted to say congratulations on being recognized for Dr. Martin Luther King as one of the awardees there, and just the beautiful words that were said on your behalf, and seeing, of course, your lovely, beautiful wife there as well.
Yeah.
Yes, that was Ms., that was Dr. Wyatt. No, no, I know. And now, and I love the music, they had great entertainment, delicious food, so I just want to say congratulations to all the awardees, especially Mr. Tillman.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, well said. Ms. Grande? Board comments, did you have anything? You could always say pass.
Hello, okay. No, I just wanted to say, I was, really loved the words that Scott said. It was like really heartfelt and genuine, and almost made me want to cry. It was beautiful, and he looked at him and he said, you know, you've been my mentor. And I was like, you know, I was so glad I heard that, because I had that feeling about him. He's been nothing but great to me since I came on board, you know. He's, he's kind of already counseled me in a low voice, and nobody even noticed that he was helping me. I mean, class act all the way. I really, was really very happy, especially over in Warm Springs, when he told the whole audience he finally decided that he liked me. I went, phew. And for the whole world, I didn't even know he was thinking of that, maybe he didn't. But yeah, he's, you know, I've, I've been following, I've been following him, and I was going to say funny papers. I've been following him in the newspapers for years as a student, you know, I mean, he was, I started going to college in the 90s, 95, and I knew I was going to do this, and there was always Danny Tillman. I go, shh, I voted for him for a long time, so, I made it, I got here, yay! So, thank you, that's why I just want to say, thank you, Scott and Mr. Tillman.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. He got to tell you he liked you in two months, he hasn't told me in eight years. If that, if that means anything to you. Alright, Vice President Tillman?
Love you, Dr. Wyatt. Thank you very much for the kind words, both of you. And thanks for coming out for the event, great event. It was, I went to the Arroyo Valley High School after the parade, and that was a nice event. It's just good to see all of the government agencies working together. And we can do so much when we work together, and it all benefits the students. And sometimes we make our goals too loftily. Just to see students in a constructive, positive environment is a big deal. And every second we have them in an environment like that is literally saving lives. So I hope we continue to work together. I know, I was talking to a gentleman who, and I'll talk to staff later, but was looking at, using our sites for some program, and they needed us to try to confirm a little earlier. Whatever we need to do to allow people to use our facilities to benefit youth, we've got to do it. I mean, the difference between having a, a site that's shut down totally in the month of July versus being full of 500 students, why wouldn't we make every effort to do that? So I hope we continue doing that, because it truly does make a, a big, a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, Ms. Savios?
I was going to say, you know, something similar to the effect of Dr. Scott Wyatt, that I haven't gotten that in two years, but I shouldn't feel as bad because yours is eight.
You might have a long way to go, Ms. Savios, a long way.
Get in line, right? Nothing, just, you know, want to say, welcome everybody, Happy New Year. I hope that you guys had a wonderful time off, and, you know, with your families. And also, you know, congratulate Mr. Tillman, we were there in support. I think all of us were here, with the exception of Ms. Chahuski, but I know she had a perfectly good reason why she was not there. So, but, but I think aside from that, I did have something else, and I think I might have just drawn a blank. It is getting kind of late. So no, I'll just end with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savios, Ms. Chahuski?
Also, Happy New Year, everybody, it's great to be back at our second meeting. I'm really excited about, you know, continuing to serve. Danny, I'm sorry, that, Mr. Tillman, I'm sorry, I did not make it. We, we had planned, we'd given our grandchildren Disney, separate Disney weekends with the grandparents, and so those tickets were bought before we even knew about that event. So I was heartbroken to not be there to recognize you, but, you know, well deserved, and congratulations. And I was, I was definitely there in spirit. I did attend the MLK Parade on Monday. The rain, it did not rain during the parade, which was pretty amazing. The skies cleared up for us to be able to do that, and it was, you know, wonderful to see so many families sitting along the parade route. I wondered who was going to be out there because of the weather, but there were even some employees and some that were out there, and, you know, the community members out there supporting us. So that was really exciting as well. I'm, I probably should have said it while they were here, and I, I feel bad that I didn't, but I, it took a minute to process that. I'm really excited to see the Expanded Learning CAPS opportunities for summer and intercession, because, you know, those of us who went to San Bernardino City Schools in the Dark Ages, when we had a lot of really enrichment and some of these programs in the summers, not just academics, I'm really excited to see that happening here. I'm looking forward, I'm going to go to the Student Leadership Advisory Council meeting next week, and I'm really excited to go and see what they're doing and how things are growing, and to see some of the students that I was, you know, fortunate to work with last year, so I'm really excited about that. But that brings me to my question on where are we on student board members? And what do we need to do, and how can I help in that process? Is it something that I have been involved in, and I'd be, you know, more than happy to help get it going? Have some conversation about what we want? Do we want like, you know, a shadow program? Do we want just rotating folks? Like, what, what is it that we want out of that program? And then how can we get it up and going and sustainable? So that's something that I'd like to see us talk about. And then the, I'd like to end with this. We lost two educators over the last month. Tracy Hamby, who was a teacher who retired from our district, a good friend and just a wonderful photographer and just a wonderful man. Husband to Luann Hazel, which, who many of you know, she worked with the PAR program for a long time. We lost him, you know, after a valiant battle, health battle. And then unexpectedly, a teacher, he's a teacher in a neighboring district, but he graduated from Pacific High School, John Lunt. He was tactically killed in a car accident, drunk driver on 40th and Sierra Way. And it's affected a lot of us in the education community. He, he graduated from here, he didn't actually teach here. But he's big in the community. He, he, he was a, the irony is, he was a huge in the, supporter in AA and of a lot of folks. He touched a lot of lives and got a lot of lives turned around and supported a lot of people in their sobriety. And it's just heartbreaking that he was actually killed by a drunk driver. So, you know, I just encourage everybody to be, you know, mindful, you know, if you're not drink and drive. Uber, it's so easy now with Uber and Lyft to not do that. And, you know, if you need help, if there's, you know, there are lots of organizations and a lot of people like Mr. Lunt that are out there to, to help you through your journey. And so I just wanted to honor them in my, in my comments. And so I just wanted to honor them in my, in my comments tonight, because they're both people who impacted our community greatly.
To answer your question, Ms. Chahuski, we're so glad that you're on the board because of all the work that you've done and tried to help us to get our student board members. So we're looking forward to redoing all of that work. We paused because of, you know, some of the vacancies that we had, but we also needed some additional information from the board. And so we're very, we're looking forward to partnering with you so that we can get that ball rolling.
I volunteer to head that up for the board if the Mr. President is okay with that, to get that going, because I know it's something that he's wanted for over a year now, and so I'm willing to take that, take that on and work with you, Dr. Rodriguez, to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chahuski, and thank you for, you know, taking that over. Absolutely. Ms. Grande?
I just woke up all of a sudden. Well, I did.
I'm sure we have you on camera snoozing, just so you know.
I'm really excited to hear this because, you know, those, those student representatives, they're our, truly our future. And I know this because in 1995, I was a student body president and as a representative, as a student body president at Community College, I was a student representative, I was a student trustee for the San Bernardino Community College District. And that was huge. And I got bit by the bug to sit on a board, because I found I had something to give, something to share that no one else had. And it was exciting. And I didn't know it was called politics. I really didn't. To me, it was just sharing what you knew, and people listened. It was an amazing experience. And, and then from there, I parlayed that into, I went, when I went to Cal State San Bernardino, I became involved in extracurricular student government, student leadership programs. And I wound up being the first student body president for Associated Students, Inc. And Dr. Carnegie, I was on his hiring committee as a student representative. The relationships I made there, Alan Kay was one of my guys on my team, Alan Kay, R. Alan Kay. The young men that I helped, the young women that I helped go into leadership, I would get so excited because I'd say, you don't get it. You've got this opportunity here. And, and that's, to me, that was my favorite job of all time. And that's the same excitement I have here today. You know, so, so please, Mickey, bring them in, bring them in. It's going to be fun. It's just going to be fun to see them watch and grow up. I hope I live to see how big they get. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. I hope you do too as well, because that should be soon. So, all right. Well, thank you. Sorry. It is getting late, and so my humor becomes a little more cynical. I apologize. No, just to piggyback off of what my colleagues have said, really was an honor to see Mr. Tillman get recognized for his, I think it's 28 years of hard work as a board member with this district. And I'm sure his work goes beyond 28 years as well with kids, because I meant what I said, Danny, when I was talking about you. You know, you're about as real as they come. And to me, when people are real and authentic, that's, that's what it's all about, is telling the truth and doing the right thing for kids. So again, congratulations. And, you know, the one thing we did talk about, and I said it to you, is that we're here in unity. And that felt really good to be there, one for you, but also be there as a board. We heard, I think, Councilwoman Calvin say it again after, and then also Assemblywoman Reyes said it after. And that's a theme that I want us to continue to put out there. I put it out there at the beginning of this meeting too, and I truly believe in that, that, you know, we are destined for improvement. I'll say greatness, but greatness takes time, but we're definitely moving in the right direction with our city and our board as well. So great job to my colleagues and for being there. And you guys were there Sunday, Monday morning, I think it was, at a breakfast. Somebody were at the breakfast on Monday morning, and then you're in the parade on Monday morning afternoon, and then lobby stayed after for the festivities and festivals. So thank you to all of you. We were very well represented throughout this weekend to celebrate the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by our school board and our executive cabinet. So thank you to everyone that was there, and our staff too. Our staff did a lot out there at our schools too. So on a little harder note, you know, Chief Polina, I want to thank you for, I believe you had a resolution for Deputy Isaiah Cordero. We haven't said much about him here in our district, but I need him to be recognized and remembered. Deputy Cordero worked for Riverside County Sheriff's Department. He gave the ultimate sacrifice protecting our community. You know, as we say in the law enforcement community, his end of watch was on Thursday, December 29th, 2022. He worked for Riverside County Sheriff's Department for eight and a half years, and his recent assignment was on the motor unit. He was a graduate of Cajon High School, for those of you that did not know that. He was a Cajon cowboy. So I hope we can honor him in many other ways and remember him for his ultimate sacrifice, and that he made his dream come true to become a law enforcement officer. And we saw the pain of his family for that great loss. On a good note, congratulate Jayden Daniels. I've said his name a lot this year. They won the Citrus Bowl, he and LSU. And Jeremiah Martin, for those of you that remember him, University of Washington, they won the Alamo Bowl. So we got some of our kids out there doing great things at the collegiate level, winning these huge bowls in the College Bowl Championship Series, for those who are familiar. That's a big deal, folks. Please know that. Our kids are, and I imagine there's more of them. I apologize if I didn't get some of the other kids that are out there playing these huge games and doing great things. Also want to congratulate three students, Anna Adams, Ivan Arribas, and Luis Javier Diaz. They are selected for our marching band programs, participate in the Pasadena City College Rose Parade Honor Band at the Rose Parade. Awesome stuff again, folks. So, you know, our kids are out there doing amazing, amazing things at the highest level of achievement and excellence. So and that is a result of the work, hard work of our staff that puts in the hard work to help them get to that level, as well as this board's support as well. So I commend my colleagues here, the executive cabinet, all of our staff, our families, our community for a job well done. Thank you. All right, nine point two, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board member, Board President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, and members of the board, my colleagues on cabinet, and everyone attending as a guest, and all those folks who are still watching on YouTube. It is my pleasure to address you as the administrator in charge. We have many exciting updates to share with you tonight. First, I want to thank the Communications Department for their work on producing custom 2023 calendars for employees of our district. We wanted to make sure that employees know their work matters to all of us all year long, and these calendars were designed with that in mind. They feature pictures of our beautiful scholars and are repopulated with many of our district event dates. Every employee in the district returned to work to find one of these calendars at their work site waiting for them. We hope that you enjoy them. We also want to congratulate Vice President Danny Tillman, who was honored on Saturday at the San Bernardino Dr. Martin Luther King Gala Award Red Carpet Event. Several leaders were honored. The event was hosted by the Southern California Black Chamber of Commerce. In line with celebrating our students, we have a former Cardinal, Charlie Lopez, who was acknowledged as the Officer of the Year for 2022 from the Highland Police Department. He is a 2005 Cardinal grad, so congratulations to Officer Lopez. Brick blast, I also want to give a shout out to our CAPS department and Director Ann Pearson for producing a fabulous event for our students and families on January 7th. You saw a video, but I want to acknowledge the work that went into producing the event. The CAPS one, the CAPS team wanted to put something together for our school's community that Lego-type of activities are usually found in more affluent areas. But our kids had the opportunity to work with Legos. They created murals, robots. They just had a great time, and we're really excited they were able to offer that experience for students. On Saturday, this was a very busy weekend. On Saturday, hundreds of volunteers from Hope Worldwide descended on Lincoln Elementary School to work with our MNO team to give the school a makeover. Lincoln looks like a showplace today. I actually went there this morning. I encourage you to visit the school to check out the new murals, play areas, remodeled staff room, library, front office environment. The logistics required to pull off this type of effort were huge. And when you got there, you could see all the smiles of the people who were there actually volunteering their time. But that was only matched this morning when you saw those students walk onto the campus to be able to see all the things that were done for them, which was just a beautiful sight. They were wowed, and I really encourage you to go and check it out. I also want to acknowledge Victoria Flores, who was the principal of Shannon Hills Middle School, who helped to coordinate the event with Hope Worldwide. Again, these people, over 270 volunteers descended on that campus to make that place a showplace. So I encourage you to go check it out. Recently, we learned that our district was rated Blue by Pivot Learning for our statewide indicators for readiness for scaling innovation and sustaining improvement. Blue means we have the strongest measurable foundations for innovation. Pivot's Learning District Readiness Index, or DRI, compiles 30 measures across five domains to help education leaders across California better understand the conditions for launching and sustaining improvement and innovation initiatives. The DRI was developed over the past several years with input from district leaders, state administrators, and education researchers to identify a set of important organizational domains for initiating and sustaining changes that support student achievement and growth. So we encourage you to check out that index on districtreadiness.org. We Built This City, school tour. We're so excited about that. So board, your $250 million investment in our schools celebrated with a tour of ribbon cuttings and ground breakings this spring. We kicked it off last week with a grand reopening of Warm Springs Elementary School. I want to thank Mr. Tillman and Mrs. Aviles Grande for joining us to acknowledge the upgrading of our district's first school. The school got a new MU room, administrative building with a single point of entry, along with many other improvements as part of a $6 million project. Next, we will celebrate the remodeling of Del Rosa Elementary School on January 31st. All of our tour dates are captured in the card in front of you and for our guests at the door, so that's been provided to you. We Built This City is all about how we're improving the city through our schools. Margaret Hill Day, It's All About the Kids Event. This Saturday is the day of the year that you designated as Margaret Hill Day. So I wanted to take a moment to tell you about a community event that is being organized in her honor. Our friends at Young Visionaries and Maggie's Kid Foundation are producing Dr. Margaret B. Hill, All About the Children's Day, Children Day, which will feature a whole lot of fun for kids, including live music, jumpers, face painting, balloons, food trucks, and toy giveaways. Families can help with other resources or can also get help with other resources, including food, clothing, and vaccinations. The event is planned for 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Young Visionaries Community Resource Center on the corner of Fourth and F Street. Learning Walks, January 26th. Next week, we will hold our second Learning Walks for this school year to help us collectively observe and reflect on current teaching practices across the district. These structured classroom visits are organized several times a year by our Ed Services Division under the leadership of Mrs. Anna Applegate. If you'd like to participate in the Learning Walks to come see the great work of our teachers, please let Karen know so that we can give you the details. We will have an LCAP meeting on January 26th, so please join us. This is a community meeting. The topic would be, will be mid-year update. Again, this is Thursday, January 26th, from 5:30 to 7:00 here in the Margaret Hill Community Room. We will also have it online. And then lastly, we have our Enrollment Fair that will take place on February the 4th. Enrollment and Placement Services will be hosting an Enrollment Fair on Saturday, the 4th, between 9:00 and 1:30 at Jones Elementary, which is right across the street from the Board of Education. And so again, come learn about all the great programs that we offer here in San Bernardino City High School District. Again, it is because of your leadership that this board has provided that affords us these great opportunities for our kids. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you as the administrative in charge for the month. Our next regularly scheduled meeting in February, Dr. Funchess, will be leading our district as the administrative in charge. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time this morning. This afternoon, almost morning.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and we are moving forward to make sure we're not here till tomorrow. Ten point one, Approval Personnel Report, number 11, dated January 17th, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
Senate, move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. You guys are going to have to get a little quicker on those. I know it's late. It's going to get later if we go slower. All right. All right, motion carries. Moving on to ten point two, Approval of Career Technical Education Advisory Committee. This is a little bit long. I'll read it though. For Education Code Section 8070, the governing board of each school district participating in the career technical education program shall appoint a career technical education advisory committee to develop recommendations on a program to provide liaison between the district and potential employers. The committee shall consist of one or more representatives of the general public knowledge about the disadvantaged students, teachers, business, industry, school administration, and the field office of the Department of Employee Development. Very good. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the Career Technical Education Advisory Committee effective January through December 2023.
Moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Moving on to ten point three. Per CAC bylaw, Section 2, selection of members, CAC membership shall consist of a minimum of 21 members, inclusive of the executive committee, and members shall be selected by consensus of those present at a regular meeting and submitted to the Board of Education for approval. The list of new members is attached. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of new members to the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, CAC, with effective term dates as listed.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? No, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Moving on to 11.0, Consent Items. Approval Consent Items, 11.1.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Discussion and/or items to be pulled. I do need to pull 11.55, as I am an employee of the Seminole County Superintendent of Schools. I will just abstain. I don't need to recuse myself. It is not a paid contract. All righty, let's go ahead. It's been motioned and properly second. Let's go ahead and vote upon the consent item agenda as amended. All right, motion carries. I will remove myself.
11.55, which is Agreement with Wellness Together, Inc. and San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, no cost to the district.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Vote, please. That takes us to Review of Board Requests. Staff will review items, updates requested.
Good evening, board. I would like to say thank you very much for making my job so easy tonight. So otherwise, I fell asleep at the wheel, and you're going to correct me, and I'm going to have a lot to capture right now. So I only captured four this evening for you. So the first was from Abigail Rosales Medina, who asked that we would share the fentanyl video on social media website, along with recognizing the students who were involved in producing the video. Then Ms. Myra Sabios asked that the board would get a copy of the video as well, and so the video as well, and so we'll make that happen. Myra Sabios then also asked that the board would get an update about fentanyl overdose cases in the city and county. And I know that Mr. Philson provided some of that, but perhaps there's an update as well. And then Ms. Mickey Chahuski and Ms. Marielle and Abi Las Grande asked that we would provide an update on appointing the student board members to the board. So those were the four I captured. So if there was anything else that I need to make sure we list, please let me know. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right, folks. Thank you again. Meeting adjourned. And as always, safe drive home. Take your time. And as always, may God bless you all. Thank you.